Would you watch this?
Yes.
Sixteen hundred hours. No?
Hi, doing? Good evening, everyone. How are you? Good. Can everyone put their phones on silent and vibrate? Right now? Thank you. We had a little clerical error back there as well. I'm running a little bit late. Thank you. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. This is our regular meeting. Um, usually we have it every first and third Tuesdays. I believe this is not the third Tuesday because everyone was out in Lansing, am I correct? For CapCon. And, um, at every beginning of every meeting, we started with, I'm a little under the weather, with the invocation, and then it's led by a pledge of allegiance. I believe you're gonna do the invocation today. Mr. Zander? Can everybody please stand? For the invocation led by the pledge of allegiance afterwards.
Dear God, I ask you to be with us. And let this, let this council meeting go smooth tonight like we always do. And we pray for our, for our city council members and the mayor. And keep this East Point going smoothly this, this time, this time whatsoever. And we just wanted to do that. And, um, we just, we just wanted to do that smooth, smoothly can we get. In Jesus' name.
In Jesus' name.
I present the invitation to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Zander. That was beautiful. We have a proclamation. Item A for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May twenty-twenty-three. Anybody would like to read that? Yeah? Okay. Please, councilwoman. Thank you.
City of East Point proclamation, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the month of May is recognized as Asian American and Pacifican, Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the United States. And whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community has played a vital role in shaping the history, culture, and economy of our nation and local community. And whereas the city of East Point, Michigan, is home to a vibrant and diverse population, including many Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who contribute to our community's social, cultural, and economic fabric. And whereas it is important to celebrate and recognize the significant contributions and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and acknowledge the challenges they have faced and overcome. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council declare the month of May two thousand twenty-three as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of East Point, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by people of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage within our community, proclaimed this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand twenty-three.
You're here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Holman.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
Present.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Here. Thank you. The approval of the agenda, council?
Mayor had a couple items for that. Uh, the first one, uh, about the local officers' compensation commission, I would just motion we remove it from the agenda unless there was a councilperson that added it because we only add it to the agenda if, uh, we're going to reject it.
What was that again, councilman?
Uh, for the local officers' compensation commission determination, we only, only goes on the agenda if, um, it's being rejected, not if it's being accepted. And actually frankly, if we accept it or reject it, it means the same thing because accepting it's a no increase and, uh, denying it is no increase. We, we can't change it at all.
Okay.
So I just, then motion we remove the local officers' compensation commission determination, which is, um, item, uh, D and new business from the agenda.
Okay, or we can replace it with, uh, our city manager, I was about to call you, our councilwoman. Our city manager for, uh, Apollo, was this the fire apparatus sales and service? For our fire department to get, uh, some fixtures to fix the fire truck? You wanna replace that with?
I was, well, I thought we, should we do one at a time?
Okay, go ahead. I was gonna just amend it to replace it so we can do all one. Vote. To, you know, to take that off and to replace it with, so we can just do one vote.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I can mention my other, so, yeah.
Oh, you had more than one?
Yeah, I had one other item, too.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't know. Okay.
So we're gonna do it separately in case somebody wants to say yes on one and no on the other. So you should take them separately.
But he has other things he's trying to add, so we have to listen to what he has to say.
You shouldn't do them together because somebody might not wanna vote yes on both of them or no on both of them. So let's take them one at a time. That's the way you're supposed to do it anyway.
Okay, now what you were saying again?
So, yeah, motion to remove, uh, new business, item D, local officers' compensation commission determination.
I'll support that.
Can we have a discussion? About that? Um, I understand your point, um, the point that you're making that to remove that, um, is, is essentially inconsequential, but could not the same be said, uh, when we have item K that's just a receive and filing of the planning commission's annual report? So, and I, I mentioned that because if we're gonna, um, begin to just take things off purely because, um, a vote yes or no may not affect the outcome, um, then that would mean that all these things on here, like the receiving and filing, should be taken off.
Sure. Yeah, councilwoman Cobbunis, yeah, no, the reason is because the ordinance says, uh, quote, "The determination of the commission shall be effective thirty days following its filing with the city clerk unless rejected by the council." If the determination is rejected, the is existing salary shall prevail. So it just becomes effective thirty days or else we reject it. Those are just the two options.
Right. So, so my point was, then why not go through the formality of, of going through it and leaving it on as an agenda my, agenda item in the event that a councilperson wants to have a discussion or reject it? I'm, I'm not understanding the logic behind removing it purely because you think it won't change the outcome.
No, that's, I, I was saying that in addition. That's, no, my main reason is because the ordinance says the only appropriate motion is to motion to reject it.
So who's to say that there wouldn't be a motion to reject it?
That's what I'm saying. I was asking. It didn't sound like any councilperson put it on the agenda. Right, did a councilperson put it on the agenda?
I can clarify, as city clerk, I listed it on the agenda, um, so I've provided that copy to all of council. Um, I wouldn't be able to take an action based off each individual member in order to understand if the council as a whole rejects something. It does have to come to a council meeting for a vote to be taken place that you do want to reject it. It's also a place, as councilmember Cobbunis, Munis has stated, um, for the public to receive a copy of the document. So at this time, it's published to all of the council members. Placing it on the agenda allows the rest of the community to be able to review the memo that was submitted from the local officers' compensation commission to review and also provide feedback. So that is why I placed it on the agenda as the city manager's agenda.
Sure, so I guess in the future, let's add, and I know I've said this before, let's add who put something on the agenda. But also, the ordinance states that only, or a councilperson puts it on the agenda if we wanna vote to reject. You, you as the city manager should not be putting it on the agenda, according to the ordinance. It's only if a councilperson wants to reject it. That's how we'd done it until, I think it was on the agenda two years ago, but before that, we never had it on the agenda. The commission has its meeting, makes its determination, council gets a copy. We should be posting the minutes and the agenda on the, the website. And if somebody wants to reject it on council, then you put it on the agenda and we vote to reject it or not reject it.
I think I would be more concerned if it wasn't included from the standpoint of transparency. So, you know, it, it seems like a wasted bit of an argument right now.
I know, I understand what you're saying, councilwoman Cobbunis, uh, about transparency. That is just how the ordinance is written. I'm following the ordinance. So, I don't know. So, that's all.
Okay. Is there anything you wanna take? Okay, where at the, uh, approval of the agenda does? Anyone wanna add or subtract?
Well, let's vote on, vote on this one.
Okay, let's vote on the motion. We got a motion and we got support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
No.
Go ahead, councilman.
And then, thank you. Uh, next item was to, I would want a table to remove the rope lighting organ, ordinance from the agenda, which is new business G, discussion and, on ordinances number twelve oh one and twelve oh two. Would be my motion.
I'll support that motion. To, to remove item G.
Was it to remove or to table?
Remove.
To remove.
Again, um, if we can, now that we got in motion support, from a discussion standpoint, I'd be interested to know why we would be removing that.
It's mostly because I think the only thing we've ever talked about more than this, uh, as a city, is the medical marijuana ordinance. We talked about the planning commission, came to city council, voted. Went, it was recommended to come back to the planning commission, went back to the planning commission, came back to city council again. And we haven't, nobody's changed. It's been a year and a half. And now it's on our agenda magically again. Again, so who added this to the agenda? I guess, again?
We did. It was a recommendation from the Downtown Development Authority.
So, but you're, as city manager, you're recommending that we reverse course on that ordinance?
My recommendation is actually to, to send it over to the city attorney for review, as listed in the agenda.
So yes, I'm motioning we remove it because I don't think, we, we've already talked about it. It's been in effect for a year and a half. Has it been, have we enforced this ordinance on anybody either?
So, part of this is a discussion that can take place at the agenda item is part of my concern. I don't know, like, I can answer and go through the questions, but we're having the same conversation at the approval of the agenda.
To that end, this is why we put the items on the agenda, so that we as council can go through and flush it out. It seems like we're trying to, um, get around that process and I'm, I'm, call it newbieism. I'm just not understanding why. But, anyway.
We got motion and support, I believe. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
No.
Anyone else would like to add or subtract from this agenda? Okay, I would like to add and replace item D with the local officers' compensation commission determination with the, uh, replacement of the fire engine, correct? For, for fixing that. Fixing the fire truck. Motion and support. Please call the roll.
I apologize. I did not hear.
Oh, support.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is hearing of the public. The hearing of the public is now open. You get, uh, some, three minutes before the meeting and a little bit after, before we close. So the hearing of the public is now open. Excuse my voice. I'm losing my voice, but please.
Point of, uh, inquiry slash order from, well, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I don't know as if there was an actual, uh, vote to approve the agenda. It was just for those different amendments. So now that those amendments, uh, two of which have been, uh, passed and one which have not passed, then, then the actual motion to approve the agenda with the amendment should be made by the council.
Okay, I thought we did that with the item D replacing with that. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I, uh, motion to approve the agenda with the amendments.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you. Now, the hearing of the public is now open. Good evening.
Oh, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Um, I just come to you to, uh, talk to you about the opioid settlement dollars that the city has received. Um, I just wanna make sure that the money's being spent in a good way to help the many cit, many of, most of the citizens in the community that we can help. And I do understand that you recite, you received a letter from a certain organization trying to get that money to open an engagement center here in Macomb County to help people with addiction. And I emailed all of you a copy of a request for proposal that the county had already put out that they're funding that. So this organization is trying to come and get that money for something the county's already funding. And I also, um, had emailed all of the, um, council members and, and the mayor, um, something put out by the Michigan Association of Counties that's called the Michigan Opioid Settlement Funds Toolkit, and it talks about how the money can be spent. It gives you evidence-based ideas of how it, it should be spent and best practices. And then, um, I know also, uh, Macomb County Community Mental Health Officer Subs Abuse is willing to come and have discussions and maybe help guide you on best practices and how the money could be spent. And they don't want any of it. They have their own. So I'm not here trying to get any of that money from you. I just wanna say I think we should use it appropriately and how it's gonna best help the community. So I hope you had time to look these over, and then I believe that the Macomb County Office of Subs Abuse sent you a letter as well, um, explaining that they would provide services or like consultations, uh, with the mayor and city council on how to best spend the money. And one of my thoughts is, I know Judge Galen is really passionate about having a drug court here. That could be a pretty good way of helping get that started. You know? And I just wanna offer myself too as a resource to you for conversations, and I, like I say, I don't want any of the money. I work in this field. You know, that's what I've been doing for over a decade, is helping people into recovery and people with addiction. So I'm out there on the streets every day. So you can always reach out to me if you have any questions, concerns. If I don't know an answer, I will find out for you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. I'm here to remind people that the second community house fair that is being conducted will be at Covenant Missionary Temple at two eight four nine one Utica in Roseville. The flyers are still on the counter. Hope everyone will come and participate. They're doing blood pressure checks, um, glucose checks, and, uh, breast cancer screening. So that's beneficial to everyone who participates. Hope to see you all there Saturday, ten o'clock. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am here to speak about the accursed rope lighting. I was so hoping it was not going to stay on the agenda. We have had two public hearings. The first one when we set the ordinance, the second one at the behest of council. There was little to no support in the public during any of those public hearings. But yet we have people that don't like the decision that was made, and they will continue to ask for it. I respect all the work that the DDA does. They are a small chunk of the city. Rope lighting does not add any value to the aesthetic appearance of our city. We are trying to take this to a new level. We have a master plan that is trying to take the city into the next generation. Rope lighting does not help. It is a form of advertising. If somebody needs rope lighting to conduct their business, they're not conducting a sound business because most of this rope lighting that is on, is on well after business hours. It does not add anything to this city. It makes it look like a carnival-type atmosphere. If somebody tells me that rope lighting helps with security, I would say install some lights above your building. Paul's Mini Market across the street from Cloverleaf did just that. Looks beautiful. Nice lights shine down on the sidewalk. Everybody's nice and safe. Does not look like a circus. If you're telling me that it somehow brings business, if the lights are on at ten o'clock at night and your store is closed, you're not getting business. And I don't know of anybody that's going to say, "Oh, I remember that store has that really pretty lights. I'm gonna go shop there." It is an absolutely ridiculous thing. Now, if the ordinance needs to be tightened up, I'm sure it can be. There are certain lights that are nice, you know, when you string the lights in parking lots for outdoor events and things like that, that's nice. But these offensive little lights that outline windows do not add any value. We are a community that at one point was much larger and had a whole lot more businesses. None of those businesses had rope lighting, and they all thrived and prospered. We are now in a new age, and if a new age requires rope lighting to be prosperous, I would ask somebody to check their business plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Cindy Federley, East Point resident. And I just wanna reiterate Mr. DeHans comments. We are, we should be done with talking about rope lighting. It's been discussed. Residents don't want it. It should be done. Now, uh, for the agenda for tonight, I wanna talk about the Smart Cities Connect Spring Conference and Expo that Mayor Owens has asked to attend. The agenda for that meeting appears to benefit those that actually work for a city, not a mayor that is unable to implement change. If the city is choosing to send anyone to this event, it should be the city manager. The agenda also appears focused on larger cities. I fail to see the benefit of our mayor listening to a presentation regarding smart cities and urban infrastructure. We're a small city, and I don't think we can influence a power grid or public transit. I also question the motivation of putting this on the agenda with such a short notice. This meeting happens in a few weeks. The last conference the mayor asked to attend was submitted to council at the last minute also. It's disrespectful to residents and city council to give them little time to investigate the benefit of these meetings. Spending over a thousand dollars to send a weak, part-time mayor to a conference that will not benefit our city is a waste of our limited money. City council and the mayor are given money to attend conferences. The mayor needed funds from a former councilperson, Lucido, to attend her last conference. Councils should use the city money as though it was coming from their personal budget. We don't have extra money waiting to be spent. I also wanna express support for the fire department. If we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend on one car and one employee from MedStar, why not use that money to improve benefits to make it more lucrative for new hires? I don't understand the workings of the department, but one person in one car cannot transport a medical emergency by themselves. So this proposal makes no sense to me, and I'd really like that explained better. And when items are put on the agenda like the rope lighting, citing the ordinance number does me no good. Uh, it would be nice if that was explained a little bit better on the agenda. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Ware. I'm an East Point resident, so what I wanna talk about is not on the agenda. But I had a fence installed maybe three years ago now. Your company from the city came out and inspected it. Everything was good. Late last year, September, October, somebody else came out and said, "This fence is backwards. You gotta flip it the other way." I said, "Well, why they didn't say that when they approved the fence?" It's two and a half, three years later. Now you want us to flip a fence that was already like that? Took us to court and everything for it because the guy said it's wrong. And he said the company that came out and inspected it the first time did it wrong. So they were going around to everybody and having them redo their fences. I'm confused as to why my money should be paying for a fence to be flipped when you came out and inspected it and it was right? Now I have to go through a whole nother process and get a whole new fence? That I really don't, I really don't understand that at all. Um, also, I have issues with how the police talk to us as, at times. They're very rude. And I don't see how you come to a already probably problematic situation and make it even worse, not even de-escalated. I work for Milestone Grill, but I also stay in the community. And there's been times where like, my sister had an accident, went to the accident scene, didn't disrupt them, stayed on the sidewalk till they got done talking. First thing police officer, "What you doing here?" "I'm not bothering you. I'm here to make sure my sister and my nieces and nephews are okay." That's it. They had an accident around the corner from my house, leaving my house. Why wouldn't I come make sure they're okay? He was absolutely rude. I even called, uh, the police station. I think I talked to his chief. And he said, "Well, they were coming from a situation where guns were involved, so they were kinda heightened." I don't get that as an excuse for me standing on the sidewalk, not interrupting your investigation just to make sure they're okay after you talk to them. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this was your first meeting, correct?
Yes.
Keep coming.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Joe Zangary, East Point Firefighters Association, Local 1561 President.
Jason Frittini, Vice President, Local 1561.
So here tonight, I just really want to thank everybody for the candid conversation we had at the last meeting. I believe our dialogue helped put us in the right direction. In regards to the direction that we received from, that the union and the city both received, just want to report back that the process is working. Our board, along with the city, has met a couple of times to discuss the hiring standards. The city is in possession of a proposal that allows them to hire basic EMTs ASAP. This was a good faith concession made by the union and we made it for two reasons. One, this was the directive that we heard loud and clear from Madam Mayor and rest of council. And the second one, and the most important one, is it's what's best for our residents. We serve them. The current hiring challenges aside, you know, we're looking forward to getting this finalized in the next couple of days, I would imagine. I've had an in-depth conversation with the fire chief regarding hiring and training these new firefighters. I believe we have roughly 12 applicants right now. We're looking to fill these vacancies as soon as possible. So again, I'm sure you received your same report from the city manager. I just wanted to give you it from our perspective. We have heeded your advice and we're moving forward with this. Thank you.
Gerald Burak, 28673 Sunray, Chesterfield, Michigan. I'm here for other business too. I just want to warn you and the citizens of East Point about wide-scale corruption in Harper Woods. Those are the police reports I had to sue. Jeff Maner, the Police Department, and City Clerk Mickey Todd to get of Paul Josephella, trying to kill three people in Harper Woods if they've done everything they could to cover up and still are. He's mafia. And the last time I was here is 2018, asking how much it costs to get away with attempted murder of three people in Harper Woods. That's when Ted Stagger came to my house and threatened to arrest me if I go back there to city council and ask how much it costs to get away with attempted murder of three people there. So that was in 2018. So in 2019, on February 5th and 19th, I went to Detroit City Council with these police reports. But I went before Speevy and Leland, both corrupt council members complaining about wide-scale corruption in Harper Woods. I was told to go to Tim Keelin with Wayne County Commission, which I gave these police reports to, and he refuses to respond. I've been emailing him ever since 2019. Dana Nessel's blocked me from emailing these police reports. And Attorney William Trupa tried to get me to pay off Harper Woods. When Jeff Maner, Robert John Vitale, who was also Monica Ne, Tricinelli, and Dan LaViza, those are where his alias is, Ronald Gilman, Miglio and Scatars had helped him break into my house and swore he never tried to kill three people there and I have to prove it. Oh, I've done that. There's your evidence right there. I also like to know, has anybody been charged with the murder of Priscilla Slater in Harper Woods? I don't think anybody's been charged, have they? After the McBride rape squad raped her. And I'm saying that Harper Woods is even worse than Detroit and Roseville's police departments, which are both featured on the freethoughtproject.com. If you could search that, both those cities. I don't think it even ends on Detroit's, but I was there when they framed Amy Preston. I was framed also by that hit-and-run drunk driving judge, suicide drunk driving judge, Katherine Steenland. I had really good results in their city council because she killed herself. And they got rid of James Berlin, who likes to kill cats and dogs. And I think we have enough of that. I'd just like to say that our Department of Justice has wide-scale corruption and that's in License to Lie by Sidney Powell and her website is defendingtherepublic.org. If you want to know the truth about COVID, that's in The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy Jr. and Plague of Corruption by Dr. Judy Mikovits. And also check out the Genocide Treaty and Silent Weapons for Quiet Wars on StopTheCrime.net. May the hand of God be with you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Sheila Yalinski, East Point resident. I'm here to talk on the rope lighting. So in the letter in the packet, I mean, Mr. DeHaan and Commissioner Lubek has also sent an email regarding this of all the times we've visited and revisited it. And I have to say, in this letter, it says most lights were installed prior to the ordinance being amended. That is not true. There were very few lights that were starting to come up at the time that this was brought up in Planning Commission. Most of the lights have come after the ordinance. And the cost to remove them, we just have to unplug them. There's no cost to remove them. Did you look at the ordinance before you installed them is what I'd like to ask most business owners. They do not bring the business to your place. There is nothing you can find online for these rope lighting as a safety feature. They are merely decorative and obnoxious. The other thing was that the zoning, most zoning amendments being retroactive. These are not retroactive. These are something that we want to see going forward as presenting our city as a most beautiful place. And that's not with lighting. That is with the businesses and the people and the community. So if you have questions, there's a couple of us planning commissioners here if you need more on this. But we respect the DDA but don't agree with their reasoning on this and can't find any justification other than they're saying the cost. I'd like to see proof, if they have it, that their businesses have increased because of the lighting. The second thing that I just want to bring up is kind of a suggestion for residents applying for commissions or boards. I've noticed on applications that the applications are not filled in completely. In most commissions and boards, we need to dot our i's and cross our t's. And I'm just worried that if you're not filling out an application correctly and completely, that I can't help but wonder how you're going to do on a board or commission. I think we should just take a closer look at applications going forward if we could.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and Council. Linda Flanzy, East Point resident. I just wanted to talk about the commercial truck parking at the Big Boy. It started out with like one or two and now we're up to seven commercial trucks that were parked over the weekend. And it's getting to the point where the residents feel like we have a truck stop at the end of our street with that many vehicles. So I don't know if you can do anything about that, but if you can look into it, I'd appreciate it. And then the other thing I want to briefly touch on is the rope lighting. I've spoken against it. This is like the fourth time that it's come before council. I do not support them at all. I think they're just an eyesore and it's a cheap look, you know? It makes the city look cheap. We're not a cheap community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Hello. My name is Siwanda Bucklesney. I'm a resident here in East Point and I'd like to say that I'm happy to see that the mayor is going to meet with other mayors to get information on what has been discussed and what she's doing to help us do more and think about more innovative ways to improve the city. And as a taxpayer, I don't mind using my money and my tax money to help her move forward and push forward with our, with the improvement and innovations in this city.
Hello. My name is Anada Simpson and I'm a visitor of East Point. I've been out here at a couple of meetings and I've been hearing some of your minutes and some of your concerns. And I am aware of some of your concerns, like you saying that the mayor is taking a timeout in other cities and things like that. But I think that's a plus because if you, if you go around to other cities and other officials that's running the city, you can have input, you know? And when you do that, that gives insight on if you can reflect and see if that's going on in your city. So I want that to be more sort of a positive message than a negative. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time? The first hearing of the public is closed. Next is approval of minutes.
Madam Mayor, I would move to receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of April 4th, 2023.
Support. Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Cumunice.
Yes.
Councilmember DiMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Next item is scheduled hearings. Proposed Clean Water Slate, State Revolving Fund, Sanitary Sewer Improvement Program. That is now open for those that would like to speak. Okay. How you doing, Mr. Curly?
Good. How you doing?
My voice is almost gone, so excuse me. I know you're going to do a presentation on this and you have the floor. If you want, any other residents want to comment after, you have the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Give a brief, be brief as far as what this program is. I get, you're all aware that we've been cleaning and televising the sanitary sewer system. We started back in 2021 with cleaning and televising the entire city sewer system and we expect to have the entire city cleaned and televised by the end of this year. Last year, we did sewer rehabilitation and repairs in what was considered Maintenance District Number One. We divided the city into five maintenance districts. Last year, we spent about $1.5 million on sewer repairs and rehabilitation on those structural defects that we identified in the sewer system that were rated as critical or high. We've now completed the review of Maintenance Districts Two and Three, which is basically everything south of Nine Mile, east of Grashit, south of Topher, west of Grashit. And have come up with a cost estimate of just short of $5 million to, again, do rehabilitation and sectional repairs that are rated critical or high. On an annual basis, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy offers a, what they call Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan. It's a low-interest loan, a 20-year loan that communities can apply for to do sewer improvements like this. It requires a project plan be put together and those project plans are due for this coming year, are due on May 1st. So what we're proposing is to apply for a low-interest loan, 20-year loan. Typically about 2% to 2.5% interest. Although the last couple of years, it's been as low as 1.875% to complete these repairs. What's more important this year for applying for it is that the federal infrastructure dollars that are coming down the pipeline for water and sewer projects, those funds are being funneled through this loan program. So there's the potential of getting principal forgiveness on the loan. So the funding through the Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law, those funds that are coming to the state of Michigan are being funneled through the state revolving fund loan as principal loan forgiveness. Those communities that are considered disadvantaged will get more principal forgiveness, but it's, I think it's important that we apply for this and see where it goes. We don't know how much principal forgiveness is going to be given per community. We won't know that until the project plans are submitted and the state ranks those, which we would expect to draft project priority list by August of this year. And if the city's successful in being able to proceed with getting a loan and possibly getting principal forgiveness, this work would take place sometime next year. Basically what we would be addressing, we would be doing sectional repairs where there's broken and collapsed pipe and then we would be doing rehabilitation where needed, where there's cracked and broken pipe, again, that was rated critical or high. The state revolving fund program will only fund those locations that were rated critical or high. If we were to do the entire program, address all of the defects, the minor defects that we had identified, we'd be looking at about a $17 million project. But with this program, we can only fund critical and high. And it's also recommended that the city cleans and televises the sewer system every five years to keep up with, obviously with maintenance, but also to address any further defects that are found. So in order to submit the project plan, there is a 15-day public comment period that started on April 10th and ends this evening with this public hearing to get any public comments that might, that anybody might have in regards to the project. And we would incorporate that into the final project plan, any comments that we receive. But we will be completing the final project plan here this week to submit by Monday to Eagle. And I'll open it up to any questions that council or the public may have.
Any questions, Council? Would anybody from the public like to speak on the Clean Water Slate Revolving Fund?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, can you come to the podium?
I just want to comment that telling us on the last day to make a comment, that we can comment, doesn't give us time to know what to ask. So it would have been nice to have a heads up that you could have an opinion about it.
Public, the public, the public meeting was, was posted, was posted on April 10th that this public meeting would take place and the public comment period would take place from April 10th through 25th. It was posted here at City Hall and I believe on the newspaper.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Perhaps it should have been mentioned at the last council meeting or something. It's just my suggestion.
It was at the, in the March 21st council meeting, it was approved to have this, this meeting on this date.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Wanda Moody, East Point resident. You were saying that the loan is at a 2.5% interest rate and that there's a possibility of having a loan forgiveness. What happens if we are not in the category of having a loan forgiveness? Will the city of East Point then have to pay roughly, I think you were saying somewhere in the area of $5, $15 million?
If, if the city does not get any principal forgiveness, they could choose not to move forward with the program. But if they, if the city were to proceed without loan forgiveness, then yes, over a 20-year period, that, almost $5 million would have to be paid back with roughly 2% to 2.5% interest.
Okay. So you, and you two were saying that what you're doing now, there is a possibility, well, no, you didn't say possibility. You say you would have to reevaluate and look at the, the work you've done now every five years? So we're looking at millions of dollars every five years?
No, we, the evaluation, the city is, the bid for cleaning and televising the sewers citywide was about $1.2 million. That's over, been over a two and a half year period. That's, it's recommended that it's done every five years just to keep up with the system, to maintain the system and to address any further defects that might be encountered.
Okay. I apologize for my ignorance, but what causes the, having to redo this possibly every five years? Is it something that the residents are doing with the flushing or the using of their water? What causes the piping to need to be reevaluated every five years?
Well, one is the age of the system. The original sewers that were installed in the city are almost 100 years old. Design life of sewers is usually about 50 to 80 years. So, you know, settlement of the ground, just the condition, soil conditions, there are several factors that could go into a sewer, you know, cracks or collapsed sewer taking place.
Okay. With that being said, and I apologize. So with that being said, if the structure we've had in place for approximately 100 years and we're re-innovating and using newer materials, what would make that have to be redone in five years?
All it is, is an evaluation of, every five years would be an evaluation. We're not doing any repair, necessarily repairs in the same locations every five years. It's basically an evaluation. We clean the sewers to be able to maintain them, get all the debris out of the, out of the system, and then do a television inspection just to make sure that there's still structural integrity of the system. And then again, to identify any, any additional defects that might, might come about within that five-year period.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Learned something today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, the scheduled hearings of the proposed Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Sanitary Sewer Improvement- Improvement Program now closed. Next is unfinished business. Item A, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash one-two-three-two and ordinance amendment to Chapter Two Administration, Article Five Boards and Commissions, creating a new Division Ten Teen Advisory Commission of the Ordinance of the City of East Point. Council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to give second reading to and adopt ordinance number tw- two-three dash one-two-three-two and ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Five Boards and Commissions, creating a new Division Ten Teen Advisory Commission of the ordinances of the City of East Point.
Support.
Discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to offer a couple of minor amendments if um anyone was interested. Uh, the first one would just be motion to amend the ordinance to include two South Lake High School student ambassadors between ages of thirteen and eighteen also, um since two precincts belong to the South Lake School District in East Point. Would be one motion if anyone's interested.
I'll second that motion. Motion and support, call the roll.
Question about that. Um, but if we're talking about students as in the South Lake District, if they're East Point residents, they would already be included as it's written currently.
Um, yeah, it should've been more specific, the part where, let me, um, the student ambassadors in um Section forty-eight, the ex officio members, we, we had the two East Point High School student ambassadors, just in case they weren't residents. Um, this would be two South Lake also, since South Lake schools are part of East Point. Just to give them the opportunity, the same opportunity as East Point High School.
They're, they're a part of East Point in, in what way? From a voting district standpoint?
Yes, yeah, a couple of our precincts are in the South Lake School District.
Yeah, my kids are in the South Lake School District.
Yeah, like the mayor's.
Understood, but your, your children are also East Point residents. So to Councilman Baker's point, they're already included in Section um two-dash-five-two-four-point-four-three.
Right, he's talking about ambassadors, the high school, the other high school should be able to possibly ambassadors too.
And I think that's, yeah, uh, to that extent, I think that's where we, we get into the weeds a little bit and begin to make this less resident-focused and more um individual school-focused. And the, the hope and the goal of this was to stay in keeping with how we are doing our other boards and commissions, which is making them focused on the residents and the citizens of East Point first and foremost. The reason why we added um in specifically East Point High School is number one, that is our only high school in the city of East Point, and it is a school that is inclusive of students both within the city and without. And so we wanted to um make sure that we were not um not inclusive, but at the same time, keeping the focus on our residents. And I think, I think we kinda get into the weeds when we start going um to other schools, because if, if these children are from East Point and they're at these other schools, they're covered under four, under point four-three.
Even if they're um, I don't have a voice right now. So I know, as the councilman was saying, we have ambassadors that are gonna be at the high school, right? So even if they don't go to the high school, they can also be ambassadors as well?
Yes, so the way that this is written is, it's written pertaining to your residency as an East Point resident between the ages of thirteen and eighteen. And um like I shared at our last meeting, we have about close to two thousand residents in the city of East Point who are between the ages of thirteen and eighteen. And of those, we only have about five hundred and sixty-nine, give or take, at our local high school, which means we've gotta find a way to engage all of our East Point teen residents. So the hope and the goal of this is to draw them in, and, and hopefully, that'll even begin to draw students back to our East Point High School, but we've gotta deal with our residents. And all of our other boards and commissions um require that you be a resident of the City of East Point because your investment is where you live. Your investment is in the city that, that you're homegrown in.
I, I got all that, councilwoman. What we're talking about as far as the ambassadors of the high school, right, Councilman DeMonico? Now, what, is that what you're pointing at? So the high school in East Point, you can select certain kids at that high school in particular to be ambassadors.
Right.
So I believe what he's saying is we should also send South Lake as part of our district too, to allow them to also be open to being ambassadors as well, because if my child was going to South Lake High School, even though she's an East Point resident and going to South Lake High School, she might wanna be an ambassador there, just opening it up like that. So I get the whole
Right, and I understand.
This point, and it's in the city.
Right.
We, we got that. We just talking about the high school as far as ambassadors. So how?
And I understa- I understand your point to that extent, and all I'm saying is that if an East Point student attends South Lake School, they are already covered under this ordinance under um two, two-five-four-point-four-three. They're already co- covered under the membership qualifications merely because they are a resident of the City of East Point. It doesn't matter what school they go to. They're a resident of the City of East Point, so if they go to South Lake, um if they go wherever, they're a member, I mean, a resident of the City of East Point, they can apply to this commission. So those students who are in our electorate um attending South Lake can apply, and it doesn't require the addition or um for us to open up any further the ex officio membership.
Okay, councilman.
Mayor, I get, well, two things, I guess. First, um, not all boards are all residents. The Downtown Development Authority has business owners in it who may not necessarily live in the city, and the rare boards, a couple people from our city, a couple from Roseville, and then the fifth member is uh selected by those four, or the civil, uh, no, no, I'm trying to take that back, Civil Service Commissioner are all residents. Um, but then the other point, I thought it was just more consistent. If we were gonna have the student ambassador, either it should be, I just thought, as a policy standpoint, it should either be both high schools, should have two ambassadors, or neither. That's all. That was the only reason I was suggesting it, so.
So I was thinking too. Just giving the opportunity for the other high school to have an ambassador. That's what we were saying. We know all East Point children. I got that locked. I'm trying to go to the other part of what he was trying to bring about, and I don't wanna make this too long, because we, we did this too long for already, but you, you understand what we were trying to say about making an ambassador. So if they go to South Lake, can they be an ambassador, just like a high school person at the East Point?
If they're an East Point resident, no matter what school they're, they attend, including South Lake, they can apply to this team.
And they could be an ambassador at the school, right?
Yes, if they are an East Point resident. Does not matter what school they attend.
Okay, sounds good. So you took your uh motion off the floor, correct?
No, I'd still like to vote on the amendment. I mean, so we've got the main motion on the floor to pass the ordinance, and I was making a motion to just amend just that part, and we would vote yes or no, and then consider other amendments if possible after that.
Well, since we did a discussion and she pretty much clarified that it covers both high schools and both, if a child is at South Lake, they can be an ambassador. You just wanted it writing?
Oh, right, I, I, I get everything we, like, I understand everybody's view. I just think we should include South Lake. That's why I made the motion to make that amendment.
So we just need to vote on, on his amendment?
And you, you seconded it, right, Mayor?
I second it, because if it's the same writing and you just want it to be clarified, motion and?
Madam Mayor, um Councilman DeMonico made that amendment about fifteen minutes ago, and I didn't write it down, so what are we voting on? Can you specifically read what the amendment will officially say?
Sure you want me to?
Please.
Do, Mayor? Sure, yeah, the motion was just, it was to amend the ordinance to include two South Lake High School student ambassadors, which is in Section forty-eight about ex officio members uh between the ages of thirteen and eighteen, uh because two precincts in East Point belong to the South Lake School District.
So I'm reading your, your amendment in my mind. You're saying South Lake High School, comma, who, who students are from the city of East Point? But you're not, your amendment's not saying that.
No, this was the portion that we were given the option for two East Point High School students that weren't residents to be ex officio members. This was to add South Lake in, also in case there are interested students at South Lake High School.
Why would we do that?
I was just saying, just because most
Why would, why would we include several hundred uh students who live in South Lake or wherever into this?
I thought it was the same thing as East Point High School, that's all. I, I, vote no, I guess.
Probably will.
Yeah.
To, to clarify.
Pardon me?
Are you, are you done? Cause I don't want nobody to interrupt you.
Uh, yeah, I'm done now.
Okay, cause I was gonna say.
Thank you.
I, thank you. What I was thinking you were putting on the um, on the table was two ambassadors, we have ambassadors at the high school, and to make sure that the South Lake children have ambassadors too. But you're saying the ex, uh, the children that are in East Point residents? I mean, say that one more time, cause y'all, you said that.
Oh, it's the same thing. So, yeah, I, I'm intending for it to be the same as the two East Point High School student ambassadors. Those are the ones that don't have voting representation on it, go to East Point High School but are not necessarily residents. It would just be the same thing, two South Lake High School student ambassadors, if they are interested. Like, say one of their, uh, they go to high school at South Lake with someone who does live in East Point, and they wanna be on, the board sounded interesting, they wanted to be part of the process with them. That's why I was just including South Lake.
Okay, now I thought you were, in another way, okay. No, with the councilwoman, now I see what the councilwoman is saying, because they're in the city of East Point and South Lake is not. Okay, so I think we need to keep it as is, and probably move to the next amendment, whatever you think.
Yeah, let's just vote on it then, yeah.
You do wanna still vote on it, because I'm gonna take my vote away, because I didn't understand what you were incorporating. I thought you were saying that the students that are ambassadors at the East Point High Schools, the South Lake children should have that same ability to be ambassadors too. You're not saying that. You're saying,
that's what I'm saying.
That is it, what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, you're saying if they're not residents, though. They need, but the only reason
The ambassador thing is the not resident thing, the stu-
But they're in East Point, though. They, but it's in the city of East Point, and what she's saying, because South Lake is not in the city of East Point, we shouldn't have ex, those, those children out, you know, in that school, because it's not in East Point.
This sentence right here, last time we talked about it, the two East Point High School student ambassadors as designated by the principal, and this ex officio members, they're not voting members. That was intended for non-resident students.
But it's in East Point, though, correct? All right, go ahead.
Sorry, if I, to, to give a couple of clarifications. Number one, East Point High School by its very name isn't East Point school. It's directly in our downtown area. It's right across from City Hall, pretty much. Not only that, East Point High School, while it does not have the majority of uh East Point residents, so we don't have all one thousand nine hundred and ninety-three uh students who are eligible to attend East Point High School at East Point High School, we still have seventy percent of that population that is at East Point High School who are East Point residents. So it is an East Point resident-dominated school, which is why the inclusion of East Point High School was put in here to ensure that not only do we get East Point residents, but we get representatives from our local high school. And an acknowledgement of the fact that uh while we have seventy percent or seventy-five percent uh of students there who are East Point residents, we also have another twenty-five percent who are not. And so we want it to be inclusive and allow the leadership at the school to be able to pick two East Point students who are investing in East Point, because they're attending East Point High School to participate on this committee. That being said, that's a totally different scenario in my mind's eye from South Lake High School, which may happen to have some East Point residents, a very much smaller percentage. I'm sure it's not even fifty percent of East Point residents. And I think without having that data, um, we would be remiss to suddenly um wanna begin to open the door, because then you need to open the door on everything. If you start here with our teens, you might as well do it across the board on all of our boards and commissions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just in conclusion, um, we had a very lengthy discussion last time on this, and um, as you know, as you know, I
I did, I was letting
Yeah, I withdrew my motion, if you recall. And, and I, I, and all due respect, I don't understand why we would, why would we put in another high school uh when the whole concept of this committee, I'm assuming, was the kids live in East Point, and they would probably be more attentive of what's happening in East Point, and could make suggestions how they think we could improve East Point. You start opening up to South Lake High School or whatever, Roseville, Warren, Harper Woods, uh, this is, this ordinance is specifically saying, hey, kids of East Point, you've lived here, you're thirteen years old, you're seventeen years old, and you may have an idea that the five of us, well, that wouldn't be surprising, the five of us never thought about it, uh, that they may have ideas that we think is a damn good idea. So why would, enough said, that's it. I'm, I'm done.
I think Councilman Baker.
Oh, yeah, no, just, I'm thinking, it just seemed like the general consensus at the table, or the majority is that, is to leave it as stands, just listening to the discussion that was, that was had, and now that you would, you, I understand that you withdrew your support.
Yeah.
So are, do we still vote on it if the support was withdrawn?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
No, I think the answer is yes. Uh, if we, if a motion's on the floor, there's been a motion second, we discussed it, we, we have to vote on it. You can't just withdraw your second at that point.
Oh, somebody did that with me once, and
We did this long ago, but then we had Robert's rules.
Can I, can I, can I please?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, sure.
Okay, this wasn't long ago. This was just a matter of a couple months ago, where support was given to a motion that I made, and Councilman Curly withdrew his support. So if she's not supporting it, and the general consensus is to leave it as it is, it feels to me that we're just belaboring the issue.
I don't, Madam Mayor, I don't have the, the bylaws in front of my, I know that recent amendment that the council approved, I believe that if there is a, there is a motion made and support, it can be withdrawn as long as the motion hasn't been restated by the mayor. And I don't think that this particular amendment was actually restated. I think there was just a motion made and a second, and that was it. There was no and then I would I don't recall. If, if Councilmember DeMonico actually did restate it, or the motion was restated, but
I thought the mayor had to restate, you just said, or he had to restate it.
Yeah, you had me re- All right, let's, let's just move on.
Let's move forward, okay, councilman.
Clearly, it's not gonna pass. I had, I thought that was my least consequential uh suggestion here, but I've got a, just a couple other minor suggestions. Um, I was just going to motion to amend that they have a minimum of four meetings a year, just consistent with other commissions, and then they can create their own schedule if they wanna do it twice a month, um, so that they're not required to have twice a month. Just thought it was a heavy burden. So my just motion would be to make it a, a four-meeting-per-year minimum, and they can, of course, you know, schedule as many meetings as they would like instead of bimonthly. All right, my other idea was to motion to remove the budget clause, number forty-nine, completely. All right, and motion to change the minimum age from thirteen to fourteen, as we're pointing at the end of the school year, and all high schoolers at that point would be uh fourteen, and a lot of other cities use that as their uh age range for teen commissions. All right, well, let's move on then.
All right, um.
Original motion.
Yes, ma'am. Did we have a motion and support, everything, for the original?
We have that.
Okay, thank you. You have a motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Next is reports from administration, starting with our city manager. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy Tuesday. It's Taco Tuesday.
My favorite.
All right, um, so we'll kick it off. Uh, mayor's petitions were due today um at four P M. We will be scheduling an election commission meeting coming up soon, um, so please pay attention. Um, if you're interested in attending that for the certification, um, we'll be posting that online, um, once we organize some dates uh with the commission. In the middle of May, uh, we are planning for the call for council petitions. We have two council seats that will be up this year um on the We have two council seats that will be up this year on the ballot in November. So the call for those petitions will come out in mid-May, again, online. It'll be posted on the cable channel, website, and also information will be available at the clerk's office as well. Nine Mile Road construction is beginning on May 8th. Yay, so much excitement, we're getting a new road on Nine Mile and we appreciate all the work that Ryan has been putting in as well as our DPW and Darren to get this thing moving, especially with all the delays in material. Our economic development manager has been doing a lot of outreach over on the Beechwood to Grasha area for the businesses that will be impacted during this time. Again, if you want to reach out to our economic development manager or myself or Ms. Holman, we're available to provide as much assistance as we can or resources during this time. We still have water filters and replacement cartridges available. We have them at the library after hours and on the weekends, available at DPW and here at City Hall. We do have our budget workshop scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So if you have questions or feedback on the budget, please come out, attend that meeting and hear more about the information and as council decides in setting the budget for next year. That proposed budget is also online if you'd like to review it. It should be available at the library as well if you'd like to see it ahead of time. There is an incredible event coming up this Thursday at the library. There's a DIA event that highlights pop art, so pop art from the 1960s to 75s. So if you want to stop by Thursday, April 27th at 6:30, the DIA has an event at the library. I think it's gonna be incredible, a lot of the art, I know they've done some downtown at the DIA specifically and then they've also advertised some, like the cartoons and the incredible art that they have. So they're doing a special session over at the library on Thursday. We also posted bids for IT Managed Services. Mayor, I know you asked for an update on that last time. And the street resurfacing bid has also been posted, so those projects are moving along. Mott Avenue, I was asked last time as well for an update on that. And we're looking at a summer 2023 construction for Mott Avenue reconstruction. Our water main, again, is going in on Grasha from 8 Mile to 9 Mile. We're gonna start on 8 and go south, and that will start next week. So you will see a lot of construction. Please be aware, driving throughout the community, that there are a lot of construction workers and we want to make sure they get home every single night. So please be safe, please be attentive. We do have extra enforcement in the subdivisions, so be aware of that as well. Slow down in the subdivisions, please, we hear a lot of residents that come up and speak about the speeding that is happening. Our department has done an incredible job in enforcing it in the last several months and even prior to that, but the special enforcement in the last several months to ensure as the weather warms up, our communities are safe for our families and children. Last but certainly not least, I want to highlight our deputy chief, Matthew Merlo. Matthew Merlo has served the East Point community for over 28 years. He was born and raised here in East Point, graduated from East Detroit High School and has worked here again for 28 years. Our deputy chief, Matthew Merlo, is retiring this Friday. It's a very sad loss for the city. He's an incredible, incredible guy, incredible officer, one of the most incredible officers I've ever had the opportunity to work with. And I think I say that for all of the directors, as well as Director Ruheb that has had the opportunity to work with him. He's taken just about every special assignment in this community, has done just about every task force, training, command and supervisory school. Just an absolutely incredible man, the most integrity in this officer. So we are so, so thankful that he has served the community of East Point for over 28 years. I'm thankful personally that I've had the opportunity to serve alongside him and meet him. And I know that he will land in an incredible place and make difference in another community moving forward. I've also had the opportunity in working with his son over at DPW and he has instilled a lot of those same values, that dedication, that integrity in his son and the rest of his family. So we are so, so thankful for his service as we close out at the end of this week. With that, Mayor, Council. I can take any questions you want, mayhem.
Any questions, Council?
Sure, Mayor had one question. And more of a comment slash question, I guess. So for code enforcement in the city, a couple residents put out there that they received a violation notice on Facebook and I was looking at them and I guess first, I guess first the actual notice, second the actual violation. The notice doesn't really have enough information to even understand what ordinance was violated. It's not listed, it just says that we've discovered a violation of the East Point zoning ordinance and then it states like what you're not allowed to do, but it doesn't actually have any reference to any ordinance. So what I did was I tried to look up for the specific one, you know, why they can't do what it says they can't do. I could see, I found two clauses and our ordinances didn't seem like either of them said they can't do this. So the issue at hand, and I think residents will be surprised about this one. This one says, "Address may not be in a script font. Can have both, but not just a script font. Address numbers have to be displayed." So if someone's got their address spelled out instead of numbers, apparently that's a violation. I looked at these and I could not find where in our zoning ordinance. That's a violation. But also, I said, hey, I have cursive address on my home. And so now I've received a violation as of yesterday. And mine is completely different, though. It does reference the Michigan Building Code. I guess my question is, have we adopted the Michigan Building Code? I guess is one question. And second, I guess, why are we even? We've got semi trucks, seven of them now, I guess is the count, at Big Boy and we haven't enforced rope lighting for over a year and a half and we're focusing on cursive addresses. So I guess, sorry, it's a lot, but it was all code enforcement. Just wondering if you could address any of that.
Sure. So first, I'd highlight too, it's inaccurate to say that it's not been enforced. That question has actually not been asked of myself or my administration. And actually, I think two members did speak directly to, of the council spoke directly to the building director, who is also from McKenna, that there was an enforcement done when it comes to rope lighting. So I will highlight that first. I did take the note from Ms. Flans, we will address the code enforcement violations with the semis parking at Big Boys. I'm not aware of the notices that code enforcement has written recently. I can certainly look into them, I have taken notes and I can provide you feedback on those.
Do you know if we've adopted the Michigan Building Code?
I'm not aware of that, this is my first time hearing of it or any complaints. I haven't received any emails of it, this is my first time hearing of your notice.
Okay, yeah, if you could follow up, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know a lot of times when we ask you questions, we have access to asking you before the meeting so you can be prepared to answer those questions because I don't know if you know the whole Michigan code by heart?
I appreciate that.
You do, that's amazing. But that was, also going to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening, Mr. Blum.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I did send out a quarterly investment report that you should have received in your Friday packets. That is in response to an ongoing audit comment. Apparently it was supposed to be out quarterly, so they will be out going forward on a quarterly basis. If you have any questions about them, please ask. I would also like to highlight that the grant that we received for the fire engine, we received the first half of that grant about five days after the paperwork was submitted. I'm now trying to find out how to get them the information they need to get us the other half. But at least we've got some of it already. And then I did receive an email from Councilperson DeMonico about the budget. I'll be responding to that in the next day or two. But if anybody else has budget questions, get them to me by Thursday. I can have responses out by Friday, so you have it for the budget meeting next week.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns for our Director of Finance? Okay, going to our city attorney, Mr. Allright, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. The question that was posed to Ms. Walton about the building code, I do believe that the city has adopted the building code as well as the property maintenance code. I'm not sure which additions have been actually adopted though, so I'll work with Ms. Walton and get an answer for the council as to which additions have been adopted and when those adoptions took place. The municipal code is in the process of updating the city's code of ordinances. I've been in contact with Emily Childers, who is an editor with Civics Plus, and she has prepared a proof copy of all ordinance amendments through the end of last year. I've reviewed those proof copies and other than a couple of very, very minor typographical errors, everything appears to be in order, so that updated code of ordinances should be available for the public in the very near future. And then the final thing, Madam Mayor, is I'm requesting that a closed session be scheduled for next week's meeting to discuss pending litigation. It's a Macomb County Circuit Court case, it's case number 22000784CZ. It's just to discuss settlement negotiations. So I'm just asking that that be placed on the agenda for next week's meeting. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments for our attorney? Saying none. I'm going to ask our safety director, public safety director, Director Roheb, if he has any updates. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank city manager for recognizing Deputy Chief Merlo. I worked with him for the last five years and he's probably one of the most loyal employees that I ever worked with. He's done just an unbelievable job here, he will be truly missed. I just, one, there's a rumor out there too about our animal control, that we don't have an animal control officer right now. And we do, we have a part-time officer right now, she works just about every day. She works late, later on in the evening. So right now, we do have it under control and we are in the process right now of hiring a full-time animal control officer and hopefully, if everything works out with the budget, we can hire two full-time animal control officers. We really need two. But we are taking care of the animals, so they're in good hands, that's it.
Thank you. I didn't know that our deputy chief was leaving and I'm glad he didn't tell me because I would have pulled him to stay. Since I've been here for the last, sitting up here for the last six years, like you said, he has been loyal and actually, he has also become a friend of mine. You know, seeing the things that I've dealt with and things like that, he listens and takes the time to listen to residents and also listen to me and also just, you know, shows that he really cares. So I know a resident earlier talked about some of the things that she saw in our police department and things like that. But if you stay till the end and talk to our director about those things and those concerns, we have our directors here, they take time to listen. You know, I don't know the experience that you had and as the mayor, I apologize about that, but we are doing better. But we don't know how to do better if we don't listen to what's going on. So if you take time and talk to our director and get those things straight and let him work with you, I promise you it'll get better. So we have some good police officers in the city of East Point and some of, like all of us up here, we're still learning and if you give us a chance, we'll do better. So, but tell the deputy chief, I'm gonna talk to him after this, we have a conversation. Because he told me he wasn't gonna leave. And I'm gonna get him, so, but thank you for that. We're gonna go to new business. Item A, adoption of resolution number 23-1957, adopting a final project planning document for wastewater system improvements and designating an authorized project representative.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion on that? Saying none, call the roll, please. Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Item B, introduction of first reading ordinance number 23-1233 and ordinance amendment to chapter two, administration, article five, boards and commissions, division seven, senior citizens advisory commission of the ordinances of the city of East Point, Council.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to introduce and give first reading to ordinance number 23-1233 to amend chapter two, administration, article five, boards and commissions, division seven, senior citizens advisory commission of the ordinances of the city of East Point.
I would support that, as a senior citizen.
Motion and support, any discussion, sir?
Mayor, one comment. I guess if we're changing this commission, I guess my comment, if we're changing this commission to be anyone on city council nominating, I think we should, to be consistent, do it with all of them. You know, Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, Beautification Library, Local Officers, Parks, ZBA are all mayor-appointed. I don't know why we would just change just this one and not all of them, I guess. So I guess I'm against that change. I'm fine with starting the commission back up and I think we've talked about that a few times, just up to appointing some people in the commission's back.
Well, I'm okay with it being a mayoral appointment, so if you want to change or amend the motion, I can amend the motion to just change the language to, under, let me get to the right section. Under 2-509, section B, members of the commission shall be appointed by the mayor with the concurrence of a majority of the councilmen.
And Councilwoman, before you had made that motion or supported, I was gonna ask you, why did you put that on there again?
I did it so that it was consistent with how our other boards and commissions are not the ones teed this name, but the others where members of the council put forth a name and then we all vote on it. But I'm perfectly fine with it being left as a mayoral appointment, that's not a problem.
Okay, because I know the city manager said you put it on there so you can help assist me with, the council can help assist with, not let me have to do all the appointments and you all can have some input. That's what.
Well, it's, yeah, like our other, we have other boards and commissions where councilmen will put forth a name and then we all vote on it. And then we have some where it's just a mayoral appointment. But to be honest, that's not a deal breaker for me, I just want to see this commission up and running. And if that means that I make a concession so that it's a mayoral appointment, that's fine.
I'm fine with how it was written, I was fine with how it was written, but if you got motion and support, you can call the roll.
I don't think we got support.
Do we get support? But I was gonna just, we can just leave it as is, I don't have a problem with council putting forth an opinion or a person up and I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. We all share the responsibilities of finding someone to, you know, do the job properly.
Sure, now what about, so we're reducing the members also? Should we leave it at, well, I think we should leave it at 11 and I guess, I thought about the alternate members for a minute. We have that for, you know, the zoning board of appeals and I don't believe, or in the board of, well, I'll change kind of how that works. I don't know how the alternate members, I guess, would work.
You're going back to the old script with respect to alternate members?
Yeah, it's on, right, the current, the current one says, instead of 11 members, it's five regular and two alternate.
Right, and two alternates, right. And the reason for the reduction, as I explained at our last meeting, the reason for the reduction was to ensure that we can have a quorum and not have to work so hard, particularly with this population. If you have a huge body, then you have a lot harder time getting together and getting them all together. I wouldn't want to create more barriers to them being able to meet and have a quorum.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with that. Anything else? Okay, we have motion and support as is, please call the roll. Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
I'm actually excited about this, when I went to the Housing Commission and told the seniors about this, they were really excited, like, where are the applications at, Mayor? I'm like, we gotta put it together first, but they're really excited. So once that's together in my next meeting, I'll take some over there so they can sign up. So item C, adoption of resolution number 23-1958, authorization to apply for protecting Michigan pension grant, Council.
Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt resolution number 23-1958, authorizing a finance director to apply for the protecting Michigan pension grant and the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Saying none, please call the roll. Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Item D was replaced from the local officers compensation commission determination to Apollo Fire, yeah, to Apollo Fire Engine, for us to fix the engine for our fire department, also. also.
Can we discuss, or can our city manager talk about this for a second, since we received it forty minutes before the meeting started?
Absolutely, we actually provided information in my Friday report, informing all of council directly after it was actually broke down, so it was actually being taken out to fix a hydraulic tank. On the way, I'm not gonna get this correct, but a piece flew up, shrapnel went through the pump, and now we've got more to fix. So, we've got a full quote, we've actually, our fire chief has gone around to find other, other ways to kind of manage, instead of spending the fifty-six thousand dollars on fixing the fire truck. Initially, we were looking into opportunities to potentially lease the truck from somewhere else, so that we didn't have to fix it as we're still awaiting a truck. We've also looked into potentially not fixing it, and what the issues could, could come from that. And so, once we had all of our information together, we also received information that it takes eight weeks to get the parts, parts to be able to fix the truck. We do not wanna wait an additional two weeks to process and begin ordering all of the parts, we'd like to submit this quotation, as long as council approves it, to have the truck immediately order, well, Apollo immediately order the parts, so that we can get the truck as soon as possible.
Where did you say we received information about this?
In my Friday report.
It is not in your Friday report.
It is in one of my Friday reports, I detailed the damage to the fire, or the fire truck.
All right, well, certainly, it's not in the last one, but, okay, yes.
The damage did not occur in the last week, council member.
Okay, well, oh, we received this quote today, though, right? I've never seen this before.
Absolutely, so it's a last-minute purchase, as we know, once we've received all of the information, that we do not have another option other than to fix it, we're asking council to approve that tonight, so that the parts can be ordered, and the part, or the truck can be fixed within eight weeks. If we wait two weeks to place on the agenda for a review, even though council is aware that the truck has been damaged, we're now pushing back two weeks for the truck to be fixed, when council can review tonight, make a decision on if they'd like to fix the truck, and have the parts ordered, so that the city does have a fire truck to respond to calls.
All right, Mayor, I'll motion that we approve this quote here to fix the fire truck in the amount of fifty-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item E is approval of the special event application for the Love Life Family Community Carnival on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, through July first, twenty-twenty-three. I've been waiting on this carnival, pastor.
I think we skipped.
No, they took, oh.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event application for Love Life Family Community Carnival on June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, through June, July first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item F, approval of the planning commission's recommendation regarding the special land use for fifteen zero 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 ten mile, council.
Mayor, I will motion that we approve, or, hold on, let me, sorry, a motion, we approve the recommendation of the planning commission, denying the proposed special land use for a gas station and drive-through restaurant at one-five-zero-zero-zero, Ten Mile Road, parcel ID included here, finding that the application does not meet the city standards for special land use approval, as cited in the planner's review dated April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and summarized in the following findings of fact. The project may be considered harmonious with the twenty-forty master plan future land use map, however, this plan was created in twenty-nineteen, and more recently, the city completed planning work to re-envision the area as a neighborhood mixed-use district, which does not allow for the proposed uses. Number two, the project's not harmonious with the twenty-forty master plan goal to, quote, remediate potential brownfield contamination, end quote, because the development of a gas station causes real or perceived site contamination, because the underground storage tanks are historically known to leak. Number three, the project's not harmonious with the existing character, because there are eight gas stations within a three-mile stretch, two gas stations directly across the street, so the proposed use does not create a well-rounded, balanced, for example, harmonious neighborhood. Number four, the project's proposed to be hazardous and disruptive to the community via potential ground and stormwater contamination, noise pollution, and odor pollution. Number five, the project's not an improvement to the community, because the U.S. is moving forward to becoming carbon neutral by twenty-fifty, and developing a new gas station contradicts these efforts to reduce the impacts of global climate change. And number six of this very short motion, the project will most likely lead to an excessive or additional cost to public services, because the project does not provide a decommission plan or a surety bond for the removal of the underground storage tank, thus potentially putting a future burden on the city to remediate the site.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion and support, please call the roll.
Does he believe the applicant is here with their attorney and with the council?
Wants to give them an opportunity to address the council?
Why not? How you doing, sir? Please, come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Doug Swaddish, with me is Jay Hamoud, who is a, one of the owners of Ultima Investment Group, who own, who purchased the property and is looking to develop it. We appreciate the opportunity to address the council today, really, we just wanna address some of the things that were noted in the motion and the concerns that were raised before, in particular with the, excuse me, the, the issues regarding contamination is one of the things we wanted to address, we think that those fears are somewhat unfounded now, I do appreciate that historically, there's been some contamination with underground storage tanks, however, those tanks were built and installed thirty, forty years ago, they were single-walled steel-lined tanks. So the single wall being that there was only one wall there, the steel, steel was being a problem, because it can lead to rust and deterioration. The tanks that are installed now, and this is not at this gas station, but all gas stations are fiberglass tanks, so you don't have the concern with the rust, and they are double-walled, meaning that there is an inner wall, which contains the fuel, the gasoline, and there's an outer wall, which acts as a, sort of a second layer of protection. The tanks now are monitored internally, so that if there is an issue with the internal wall, the operator of the gas station receives a notice, and they notice, shut everything down, and they can immediately get somebody out there. Go ahead.
And this is a, you know, graph of how is the system work altogether, this is the underground tank, and then I lined up, this is what it, what he said just about the double wall. The double-wall containment is when a tank leaked from the inside, the, the gas is contained on the second compartment, which, you know, surround the first one. The monitor that he talked about, this is a monitor, which is inside the gas station, if there is any sign.
I don't mean to interrupt you, do you have a copy for all of us to see individually, because showing us that?
I can leave that with you after all, but you know.
No, I thought you probably made copies for all of us to individually see it, and while you're describing it, you holding it up, and then, you know, yeah, it was kinda.
This is a monitor, the monitor system is very sensible, it's accurate, and then, if there is any leakage, it's not, anyway, from the end of, you know, it will reflect that and give you a signal to shut off all the, in the gas station. And also, there's, you know, container containment of all the pumps, that, you know, nowadays, all these new pumps that you see, they're both like containers, so in case, also, there's a different area of these pumps you can see, and this is connected. All what we wanted to say, and also, you know, when we fill up the tanks with gas, also, there's a, there are new rules, a lot of rules that we follow in the state of Michigan. We are professionals, we've been in that business for thirty-five years, and our reputation's, our job, our, our gathering is critical, so I have, have a good background on the, on the sharing of any of these gas stations for the long, long time, and those are necessities, everybody here needs this, so we need to be part of this, and that's what I get here for your community, for your job.
So, in addition, I know one of the concerns had to do with the removal of the, the tanks. That is not something that would be a burden upon the city to remove. The state of Michigan has laws which govern how abandoned tanks are dealt with, it is incumbent upon the owner to either remove the tanks under Michigan law, or to decommission the tanks, so there would be no risk to the city, or no cost incurred by the city, having to remove the tanks. On top of that, Michigan has now adopted a fund, in addition to the insurance that they maintain through a private insurance company, the Mustafa Fund, which is, state funds would be used to take, to men, to undertake any cleanup, if, in the event, likely event that there is a leak or there is an issue. We know that those were a concern raised by the planning commission, so we wanted to address that now, to the extent, and answer any questions you may have, to the extent that there was, that this may play a factor in whether you approved the planning commission's recommendation or not. The other thing we wanted to address has to do with the location of the gas station, I appreciate that there are other gas stations along that Ten Mile corridor, however, all of those gas stations are located on the north side of Ten Mile, this gas station will be located on the south side of Ten Mile. The, and we believe it would actually help with the flow of traffic at that corner, to the extent, and there was a concern raised by some of the citizens at the planning commission meetings, we wanted to address that as well. It would service, this gas station would primarily, primarily service residents who lived on the, and I apologize, the south side of Ten Mile, or were driving eastbound on Ten Mile. It would allow them to make a right-hand turn into a gas station, or into a convenience store to make their, to fill up with gas, or to buy a pop, or whatever, as opposed to having to make a left-hand turn across oncoming traffic into Ten Mile. Would also allow residents who live on the south side of Ten Mile, instead of having to cross the street to get a pop, or to, to make a, a purchase, they could be able to do it from this gas station, which is closer to them. So, in all honesty, we believe it would help with the traffic flow, and we do believe that would be harmonious with how the, with the, the.
Flow.
Flow, thank you. Um, I don't know if the council had any other questions for us, tho, those are the two main points that, that, that we wanted to address.
Yeah, I wanna mention also, you know, I am involved with the Mustafa Fund, and then we have coverage from, from the state of Michigan. Under the law, we are protected, they have several gas stations, they are under this, they demand from us several conditions, one of them is like the bond, or you can do a financial test, self-insurance, and they won't insure you unless if you are, you know, under these conditions, you know. And we, I do have my certificate with me, if you'd like, if you look at that, you know, from the financial, so.
I know, I'm, I, I don't know if council wants to see that, it's up to you, I'm, I don't need to see it, but we have a motion, and we have a support, and we want to give you the opportunity to speak on it, and when the, before we put the zoning, and I, I know Mara, who does our planning, and does a very good job, when we put our zoning and things together, we took time out to have the, the public come out, the residents come out, the business owners come out, and tell us what they wanted, and what they want their city to look like. So it's not up to council, the people up here elected us to respect how they feel and what they want it, and then, we put a plan together with what they want to see, so if it doesn't fit that plan, and we approve it, then we'll be going against what the residents wanna see. And so, and it's a lot of things that you have, that they, they pointed out, that it doesn't follow our plan, and also other things that's underneath, that can be, cause contamination and toxins, which you said, you have things to protect that, but even if you do, it doesn't fit in our plan right now, so.
Madam Mayor, can I come in a moment?
Yes, but can you speak at the mic, so we all can hear you, please?
When I came into the city, this is a B3 zoning, it was a special use permit, what I, I, there was no master plan for future approval. I was under the impression that this is a B3, it's done properly, I can submit, I've been doing this for a long time, I submit for a B3 zoning with a special use permit, if you meet all the conditions, everything is done properly, perfect. During the end, you know, the process, then we learned that this is coming soon, so we rushed and submitted all the plans and the application to meet this requirement. But, right now, I purchase a property, I, I cure a lot of cost, you know, I, I'm bringing people around me, that's, that's costly, and then, as a businessman, you know, just to dump it on me at the end of the day, I feel like, you know, this is a disappointment, and then, I'm, I'm trying to do a good business, I, you know, I mean, it's not, I, I understand the logic, but you need, everybody need that kind of business, and then I feel like it's a necessity, as he, he kind of explained it to you, like, there is no gas station from Grassback all the way to, 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 to Grashit, and a lot of, you know, the neighborhood needs it, so they don't wanna drive all the way to Grashit, I mean, she mentioned in the report that I, there's eight gas stations.
Yeah.
There's eight, on, on the, on the left hand, on.
Right, on, yeah, but right across the street is a Speedway, right?
Yeah, but the Speedway, I mean, anybody who's coming from the east, he has to make that left turn, this is causing more damage, you know, or, or accident happen. While, if you have one gas station that's coming from Grass, Grassback all the way to, to Grashit, at least you have customers who are driving, and that they can come in, on the right side, they don't cause any accident, they can flow in and out, it's a big piece of property, it's set up properly, this is a good situated corner, you know, to, to do a gas station. We've been doing this for a long time, and then, we had appreciated, I mean, my gas station go on the top list of my, you know.
That's, that's beautiful, but again, it has to meet the, what our city wants, and to be the size that we, we are, I don't think residents want a city full of gas stations. So, even though that's a beautiful one, I think, but I wanna ask a question, because you said you spent money into that location?
I bought this, I bought the location, it was conditioned to get some kind of a, a, a feedback from the city that we can process, and then we felt like it, it is conditioned properly as a B3 zoning, so we, we did close on the property.
Okay.
I hired my engineer, he, you know, he did, he did what he's supposed to do, to submit my plans, and he is my attorney, and support, we did some reports on the site to kind of let me, our projection.
Okay, I guess where I'm going, is as a city, I'm looking at both ends, on the, the business side and the city side, which we are also, we deal with business and the business end, so, so before, like the, that young man right there, I said young man, but the, the investor right there, they want to invest in our community, before they buy properties and see a gas station and buy it, and say, I wanna buy a gas station, how does that, how does that really work? Because if I'm, if I buy a gas station, I think I can make it a gas station, and then I spend all this money on, you know, the architect work, or whatever I need, and then we paying, we're paying the city of East Point, no, but we know that that's not part of our master plan, I mean, where do we come in the middle, like, just say, if he said, I'm buying this, this gas station, do we tell these people that they can't, do we tell people that they can't turn that into a gas station before they buy the gas station, then start spending all this money, and then, once they spend the money, and saying, okay, that doesn't meet our plans? So I don't know how that works.
Hi, hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Mara, nice to meet everyone, thank you for having me, I'm the city planner, and may I speak, Mayor?
Yeah, did I describe, did I say that right?
That was a great question.
Okay.
Thank you so much for asking that question, I think it's important for everyone to hear that the city is making strides to be more business-friendly.
Right.
And that's why we hired the, our Ian McCain, our economic development manager, our community engagement managers, yet to come, our community economic development is so, a, a, a SEDOM fellow, I don't know all the acronyms so far, so we are making more of a presence in the city of East Point, but we're also doing a really good job right now at having a business-friendly personality, and being upfront of what all the requirements are to open a business in the city of East Point. And it is a little bit on the applicant's side to do their due diligence, to come forward, we can't reach out to every prospective business owner. So, when the applicants do come forward, which Mr. Jay did come forward, and we had a great conversation, we have a friendly relationship, but I did communicate on September twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-two, and I wrote this email, because I knew that we need to have the importance of having the record, but I did communicate, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, that this business request to open up a drive-through gas station, a drive-through restaurant, and a gas station, is a special land use request. And I explained to the process of how special land uses require a little bit more review from the city, because they're a little bit more intensive uses, they're not just automatically permitted uses, or denied uses, but they have a little bit more discretion, because of their heightened activity, or like sensitive use, like a gas station, or a drive-through.
I'm not saying.
So, I explained to the process of special land use, in that it's not a guarantee that city council would vote in favor of the, the, the proposed use, and I explained to the risk. And I explained the risk and I explained the policy and I also explained the policy shift of the new zoning ordinance plan. We were almost rearing the end of what we wanted to see in our 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 community in September 27, 2022. And um the applicant still chose to move on with the project, even though I explained the price, the cost, the non-refundable application fee and um I guess the legal attorney, I mean, I didn't know that this was going to happen, but the legal attorney, I explained all of the fees. Um, I explained the situation and we are still pursuing this request. The applicant has communicated that they are interested in pursuing the request, so it is their right to do so. And now they're before they're here before city council and I can talk a little about the review that we wrote, um but you wanted me to address this. So the applicant was well aware of every process and well aware of the non-refundable fee and well aware of the change of city discourse and culture around drive-throughs and gas stations.
Did you let him know that wasn't part of our um our our plan, our future planning?
I definitely did on September 27, 2022.
Okay, this is this is not court, this is.
I understand, but I I I'm sorry, but I when I approached the the it was a B3 and it was properly zoned for a gas station with a special use permit, which I I I just stated the same exact condition. You go to any city, it's under B3 with a special use permit. If you meet all the requirement, you can, I I know there is a there is a risk. If I'm taking only that risk, yes, I I'm taking my own risk, but due in the interim that the zoning is changed from 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 one zoning to another.
Uh huh.
That's what I'm standing here in front of you and I submitted the application before you take any decision on your uh new, you know, your master plan approval.
Yes, sir, not to interrupt you because we want to keep going, we just want to make sure you uh was able to speak, you know, how you felt about this. And that's why I brought her up to see both sides and I think all of council agree that we did our part and letting being transparent that you may not is going to be risky. And you just admitted that you knew that as well. So we did our part as a city to let you know that you may not be approved and you just said you knew that too. So you know, as a uh elected official and all of them, all of the uh elected officials up here, that's our job to be fair and I think we were fair to you. We didn't take your money and then told you that you may be able to get it. She let you know the risk and things like that, the cost, and you took that risk, correct?
No.
Now you're saying no. Now we have now we have to move forward.
Sorry, under the B3 zoning, I understand my risk. Under the rezoning of the plan, I could have pulled out a long time ago.
Okay.
So under the new master plan, uh that that wasn't my risk. So that's the only thing I'm trying to say.
Okay, well, we have to keep moving and I don't want to, I'm not trying to be rude, but usually um we we do let uh people get, you know, their time to speak. Also, you could have spoke in the beginning as well before we did the agenda and then the additional what what we want, don't want to prolong this. That is why we have uh different commissions to help assist us with different things. And that's why we have before and then the Planning Commission, also the council goes have certain meetings to hear what the residents want. So we have commissions, we have our elected officials, but we base our decisions on what the residents want and this is not what we want right now.
Okay.
Is that 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 fair to say? Thank you, though, for investing in the city of East Point, but you can make it anything else.
I don't know if I'm I I need to be a professional to do something successful, so this is my business.
Okay, well, thank you, sir, for investing in the city of East Point. And if you um talk to uh Ms. Mara, she can tell you other things that will fit in the plan and will fit over there that you may be interested in for the residents of East Point and we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
I'll just state, I mean, I actually was in favor of what they were bringing forward.
Okay.
Um, I understand how how things change as far as with the master plan and all of that, but he brought up a point about when he submitted his application and before there was any rezoner, there wasn't approval of a rezoning ordinance or a rezoning yet. So um for that, I mean, I'm I'm in favor of it coming. I can't speak on behalf of the rest of council, but I mean, I think he has a right to try to propose his type of business. I don't think we have a right to tell him what. I know there's restrictions as far as zoning goes. You can say what type of new construction comes in, but I don't feel that we can tell him um you have to do this type or that type, you know, that especially if that's not his profession, so.
Yeah, I think they based it more uh on several several uh things other than just the business.
Yeah, I read through it.
Okay, yeah. Um, I think, did we have motion and support on this? I think we did.
Can I ask one question for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't want to mess up your last name, so Mara. Quick question, um because this is a question that that I have had um as well with respect to um the employment of our new zoning um ordinance as well as the direction that we're going in. How close in time um between his original request and when he was notified about the changes in direction with respect to zoning?
Hi, thank you again for having me. Uh, that's a good question. So in September 27th of 2022, as everyone is well aware, um we were at the probably six fifth or sixth, the fifth plant um steering committee meeting out of seven, so we've already begun um to wrap things up. But the highlight of this review is not based off of the zoning ordinance, it's based off of if you look at the review standards throughout the review, there's eight review standards. So the first review standard is, is it um relevant to the master plan? And the master plan of 2019, so back in 2019, a couple of years ago, we were already talking about wanting walkable communities, not gas stations on every corner. And so that philosophy is relevant through to today, to this conversation. And then we talk about brownfields in the master plan and we do, we want to eliminate the brownfields within the city. And a brownfield defined by the Environment Protection Agency is a real or perceived contamination to land, real or perceived. There might be the latest technology in piping, but we all know pipes leak. So uh we want to eliminate brownfields, which is part of the master plan. And moving forward to the next, if I if you want me to go through all the standards, I can.
My question was was purely based off of when his initial contact and application was made versus when he was advised that it was not in keeping with our plan.
Um, so council member, I am, I was just as startled in September 27, 2022, that the applicant wanted to pursue the the project because of the response that I gave him and
So he he didn't apply until, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, he didn't apply until September?
No, he applied um.
That's what I was trying to understand.
I just put my computer over there, but.
Because I see a site plan application for March, but I'm trying to figure out when he made the initial contact.
Here, let's look.
Because that's March of this year that I see.
The initial contact was September.
Okay, so so.
And then he applied um with the application, March 7th, 2023.
Okay, so his initial contact was in September of 2022. You responded to him in September of 2022, letting him know that it was not in keeping with our plan.
Yes.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
And I would also like to add that we enjoyed, I enjoyed our conversations and we would like to facilitate a new business there. We want to help new businesses come to East Point. They just have to follow through with the standards of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're done, we're done now, sir.
Back again to the same scenario, I we were.
We have to, we have to keep the the um, we have to keep the meeting going and flowing a certain way. I think we gave you more than enough time. We gave you more than enough time to uh speak. We were able to speak at the, you were actually able to speak in September 27, 2022 with Ms. Mara and she gave you um information and also the Planning Commission and um now tonight. So I believe we had motion and support, councilman.
Yeah, can I just, just a quick comment? I think so for the special land uses are very, I guess nuanced, I think would be the appropriate word. There are these various things you have to meet for the special land uses, the gentleman talked about and as Ms. Mara, I'll go first name also, uh was talking about. It's very complex and it's for, you know, both reasons on both sides. Just I guess I just wanted to say that because it's not like a, at least to me, a straightforward like gentleman said, he's taking a risk going forward, the special land use. But also, of course, we've got lots of plans, but there's like wiggle room as I mean, maybe that's what the gentleman even somebody said that for this. So I guess granted saying that, I I am going to vote against a uh gas station. I hope that we have a different plan maybe in front of us, but I think it's, yeah, not the appropriate way to go. It's a tough deci- I mean, it's not just like a easy decision, lots of stuff to reconsider, all that. Um, but I guess I just wanted to just to say those comments.
Anyone else would like to comment? Oh, yeah.
I just, I just want to be clear, you know, I believe in small businesses. I believe in us bringing thriving businesses to the city. So this is not um a vote against the promotion of um economic development in the way of small businesses. This city is built on that. But it is um, the way that I choose to vote tonight is in support of sticking with our plan to have our city reflect what we've come together as a collective community and said we want it to reflect. And again, another gas station, um when you have eight within a three-mile radius, does not appear to be in our best interest.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time, council? Now, did I do a motion and support? We did a lot of conversation, okay? Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember DeMonico?
Can I just like point of clarification just before we vote, since it was so long ago?
Right.
The motion is to deny the special land use request.
Oh, yes.
Not going to read the whole thing again, that took 20 minutes, but just to clarify before before we vote, the vote is, so if you vote yes, it's to deny the special land. Uh, Mr. Albright, I think wants to.
And the motion is also making specific findings of fact in accordance with the city's ordinance.
Okay, so with that in mind, I'm voting yes.
Right, okay. Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Item G, discussion on ordinance number 1201 and 1202, council?
I actually just.
Uh, okay.
I just had a couple of questions for clarification um on this. I think I understand everyone's point, the time has been well spent with respect to the string and rope lighting, but I did have a couple of question questions. Um, I want to start with Mr. Albright. Um, if you're able to tell us, have we had cases that have come before the court with respect to enforcement of the ordinance ordinances regarding the rope lighting?
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, I had the discussion with Ms. Walton today. Apparently, there have been some cases. I'm not aware of any of those cases. I haven't personally prosecuted any of those cases. Uh, if they did come to the uh district court, it may have been a situation where the uh the person who received the ticket uh simply paid the fine or they uh requested an informal hearing before the court. Uh, and if it was an informal hearing, then somebody from the prosecutor's office, generally speaking, are not, is not involved in that process. It would simply be uh the uh the person who received the ticket and then a member of the building department uh presenting the ticket before the court. So I'm not aware of, again, I'm not aware of any rope lighting violation tickets uh coming across my desk.
Ms. Walton, are you aware of any from the building department?
My understanding from the director um is that there were uh enforcement tickets that were written um and sent to the court.
And do you know the disposition or outcome of those?
Um, my understanding is that they were not enforced. Uh, nothing moved forward on those cases. They were dismissed.
So one one thing that I think would help us, especially if if the goal um of Planning Commission, the goal of this body is to end the this conversation and not keep coming back here, um at least from me, from um the new person stepping in, it would be helpful to know, one, if we've had cases actually go forward, um what the outcome of those were, if the outcome was merely dismissal, what was the purpose of the reason behind the the court's dismissal? Because if they are finding that, um for example, that the ordinance is not enforceable as it is written, then that would mean we need to take a look at this unenforceable ordinance um and make it enforceable. Um, if if that's our goal, because otherwise, we're just going to keep coming back to this table to the same discussion and I don't want people being frustrated that we keep talking about string lighting and we're not talking about anything else. So that would be my first thing, you know, uh, how many cases have we actually had where tickets were written? How many of those made it to the court? What was the court's disposition and what was the reason for that? And if their disposition is that we can't enforce the ordinance because it's not written with enforceable language, then how do we as a city um rectify that? Um, and I think this would be an opportunity for um counsel, legal counsel, um to weigh in and make sure that if we're going to have an ordinance, that it's actionable or make a recommendation to us to remove the ordinance.
Sure, Mayor. Did, I guess one, so looking at the recommended motion, it says to direct the city attorney to amend the applicable ordinances to comply with the Michigan Building Code. How did we uh come to that conclusion? Um, uh, Ms. Walton, have you talked to our city attorney prior to, not counting the conversation today, before that, um about that statement?
Actually spoke to a licensed builder um that stated it was not in compliance with the Michigan Building Code. Um, and I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Homan. She is liaison from DDA and has been working um hand in hand with the building director and can provide more information um on that as well.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, uh, may I address the council?
Yes, ma'am, please, thank you.
So um some of the the things that have uh that have come forward, um of course, everybody needs to agree to disagree. Some people like it, some do not like it. Um, as a lawyer, the word attractive to the eye is about as clear as the word reasonable, which I guess is what keeps lawyers in business. Um, again, um, as the, I don't believe the Michigan Building Code addresses this um or regulates this. Um, we've been told that this is a a place banking tool such that um if someone drives by, you know, that business is open and will be there tomorrow. Um, one of the biggest issues is the retroactive application of this ordinance. It's just unlike any other ordinances that are adopted and unlike best practices. Um, for instance, the DDA in 2013, the ordinance was completely changed, such as to make 80% of the businesses in the DDA considered to be a non-conforming use. They were not required to go, they were not required to change things, but they were just non-conforming and such non-conforming uses were not allowed to um to open in the DDA as a new business. Um, this is something I think the DDA board believes that there is, uh, there are costs on business owners who are struggling right now to come back um after the pandemic. There's cost to install these. Um, there's would be cost to remove and repair, um, not just to, you know, pulling the plug. Um, and costs for installing other lights um that I uh would be required. Um, uh, again, there there were, yes, probably 14, 17, I don't know, 21 different meetings between Planning Commission and City Council um on this topic over the past two years since 2019 and through uh just about two years ago. Um, there were several public hearings that were scheduled. Um, unfortunately, we know that um very few people ever show. Not that you all aren't entertaining, um, but uh it is, it is, there's usually a lack of attendance um um other than the the select few people that show up at every meeting. Um, also, um, it was noted that um many of the businesses that have these lights um are small businesses, they're not the chains, um, they are sole proprietors, people who have chosen to invest in the city. It was pointed out that there um may be many minority owners or owners of color, business owners of color. Um, but but again, the strongest thing is is really the But, but again, the strongest thing is really this, this retroactive application. There are certain businesses that have opened since this was approved, this, or decision not to change it was made two years ago. So that is true. But again, it's a, it's a tough subject. So I am relaying what is been asked, I've been asked to relay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I think we've discussed all of these topics. I guess the only, the thing I see is, I guess, I, I'd motion that we ask our city attorney to write a legal opinion on, like a formal legal opinion. We've, to discuss these, formal legal opinion on these two ordinances.
And if we could just add to that, if we could have data about how, how we dealt with it as a city, whether or not we, how many, you know, cases have actually been ticketed, what happened with those, what was the disposition and the outcome of those? And if the court made a ruling in favor of the defendants, what, what was the reason behind the ruling? So that we can better understand and hopefully put this to bed once and for all.
Sure. Include all of that. I guess city admin, if you could help the city attorney with, with that, I guess. I know that's probably a lengthy motion, but if everyone's okay with that, that'd be the motion then with what Councilwoman Cobb Muniz said.
So support.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would, I would, I would agree with the, with the motion to ask our city attorney to take a look at this. Obviously, there's a lot of confusion and perhaps something has to be rewritten from it. Because what I keep getting with conversations I had with different folks, that they said that this is not written properly, which kind of surprises me that when we adopted it, when 2019, we all seemed to think that was golden, that was great. And now, now I'm hearing all kinds of stories that it can't, it can't be adopted. People have gone to court and they, the judge, whoever did it, you know, excuse the ticket. So a clarification from you, however long it takes.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to do so. I have not heard anything from either the district court judge, Judge Galen, that any section or any portion of this ordinance is either unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable. Had I heard something like that, I would have made the necessary amendments and brought it back for the council for consideration. If it was amending the zoning ordinance, then it would go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the city council. None of the cases have been, many of these cases in the district court have been appealed to the circuit court on any type of constitutional grounds. So again, I'm not aware of any unconstitutionality of, of the city's ordinance. I believe, and I'm, and I'm speaking for the, the Planning Commission now, when this whole debate came to the Planning Commission's attention, the issue of rope lighting was something of a, not a permanent situation. It wasn't affixed to the property. There were businesses, and I know that we have members of the Planning Commission here, that it was simply something that was purchased in a store and maybe put up in a window or something like that. There was no permanent nature associated with this, with this rope lighting. For instance, if somebody installed some type of light on a post in their front yard and then the city decided to prohibit those types of lights, then yes, that person would be essentially grandfathered in as a legal non-conforming use. That would be permitted. But in this case, we have a situation where these are essentially decorations in some respects. I know somebody might say, well, it's more than a decoration, it's actually a light for my business. And I understand that. But it's not professionally installed by an electrician, installed and affixed to the property of a permanent nature like the lights in, in the council chambers here are, or the exterior lightings here. These are merely accessories in some respects. So if there was somebody who actually did install this type of rope lighting for their business and affixed it to the business and it was permanently installed and it was done by a professional, and there was an electrical permit pulled for that, that would be on record here at the city. Then the issue then also becomes, how long have these, this rope lighting been at the subject property? I'm not sure how many commercial properties have this type of lighting for their business. That's one question. The next question is, okay, in what way is it affixed to the, to the business itself? Is this merely strung in the windows or outside? Or is it actually permanently fastened to the business and hooked up in such a way that it's not merely plugging it into an outlet when you open up your business or close your business, but it's actually attached to the electrical system of the structure itself? So those are all questions as well that I think the building department would want to know. And those are things that can perhaps be included in any revisions to the ordinance. But those are just some thoughts that I have. But I know that Ms. Walton and I, we can check the building department records to see which violations were issued for which properties. And then we can cross-reference that with the 38th District Court records to see what the disposition or the ultimate disposition for those tickets were. Were they just merely thrown out because there was some type of technical issue with that? Was it done because the person gave an explanation and it was just dismissed, just through the discretion of the court? So I don't know what the answers to those are, but I know that I have not prosecuted any of those cases.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
I have a question.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't mean to contradict the city attorney, but the direction that we have been receiving is not about temporary. It is about the lights that are installed around the windows, around the roofs, other things like that. And that is the direction that administration has been given, albeit from the Planning Commission or others. It is not simply temporary lights. And the examples and the lists that have been received by city administration reporting these lights are, are businesses that, that have the permanent fixtures. But there is a, a lot of discrepancy as to, and again, we can go into the minutia, but there is, there is definitely differential treatment as to what is and what is not. For instance, if the administration wants to put lighting in the children's garden above the garden, such as many of the courtyards, that's actually going to be strings with lights. Is that string lighting? That's something that the DDA is looking at doing, is decorating the garden, such as many of the placemaking, place, you know, the, the best practices show. But we have been given specific addresses that have lights around the windows, lights around the roof. Again, there's probably 17 different types of lights. So, you know, another issue, string versus, string and/or rope. But we have definitely been directed to address the permanent lighting. Thank you.
I wanted to add, when we created this ordinance and some people already had bought their lighting, which that would be their grandfathered in already. And so, once we created this ordinance, did we send a letter to other businesses letting them know to, this is the new ordinance, not to buy? Did, did we do that? So that, because usually, you know, when you see one business doing something, you're like, okay, that's pretty cool, I want to do it to my business. But then, you don't know that you can't do it usually until the ordinance, but you already spent $4,000 and things like that, you can't take it back. So I think that I want to know, did, once we made this ordinance, did we allow the business owners to know that this is the new ordinance? And this is how we're gonna enforce it and get their input? Because I don't even remember, you know, a lot of, I remember when we created it and business owners called me, they emailed me and said, Mayor, what is this? And you know, they blamed me, of course. But then I, you know, but then I also had some of those business owners at that time voice their opinion and say why they should have it and why they shouldn't have it and things like that. And they, and they did. But I want to know, how did we let the, the business owners know, okay, this is a new ordinance? Because I know if, as a business owner myself, and, and I seen lights and things like that, like, that's kind of, that's kind of neat. And then I buy it, then I spend $5,000, and then you say, oh, no, you can't have it, then I can't take it back. And then as an entrepreneur, a lot of these entrepreneurs are just starting. $5,000 is a lot of money to just buy lighting and then you tell me I, I can't keep something. You know, you know, some of these business owners are also trying to create signs that they're, so they can be professional doing the best that they can. So I want to know, when we put that out, did we grandfather those and, who already have, have the lights? And then, you know, and then let the people know who didn't have them yet, this is what's going on?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
No, this specific ordinance was written so that no one was grandfathered in.
Okay.
So, you know, they've been in business 60 years or two years. They were, letters were sent when this was brought back for the second public hearing before the Planning Commission. Certified letters were sent to 700, 800 businesses saying that this was now a violation. Of course, it's very hard to send a letter to a new business that hasn't opened yet, but all the current businesses were notified that this would now be considered a violation.
Okay.
And they would not be grandfathered in. And then, again, within the past year and a half, another certified mailing has gone out, again, 700 something businesses, close to $5,000, again notifying all the businesses that this is, no one was grandfathered in and that it would be a violation to have those lights.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
Kim, was, I don't remember, wasn't there a time period though, like, the ordinance didn't take immediate effect? Wasn't there a lag of, of either a couple of weeks or a couple of months? I forget, I know it was a while.
60 or 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
90 days, okay.
Okay, so they weren't informed. Now, those that already had it in place, that bought it, bought those lights before the ordinance created, you, we put together that they were not grandfathered in. So to me, that's, that's not fair, to not let them keep it. But those that you did, you know, notify and saying, this is what we're moving forward to, forthwith, do not buy these lights, and they still did it. Now, now what? Those are the ones that got ticketed? Is that what you're saying? Ms. Holman or Mr. Albright? Those are the ones that got ticketed? Those that were notified after the fact?
I'm not, I'm not sure who was ticketed, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, it would have been anybody.
Everybody, anybody, okay.
Correct. Nobody was safe.
Nobody was safe, okay. Those are just some of the, the questions that I had with that.
Counsel? Anything else? I think we had a motion in support to, for administrative, to move forward. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item H, thank you, Ms. Holman. Item H, introduce and give first reading to the amended zoning ordinance, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I would move to introducing and give first reading to the amended zoning ordinance and schedule the zoning ordinance for a second reading and consideration of adoption at the regular city council meeting on May 9th, 2023.
Support. Motion in support, please call the roll.
I think Mayor, I think McKenna was hoping to give a presentation.
Oh, I don't know. It's up to counsel if you guys don't need the, the presentation, but.
What do we, well, what are we looking at? Four, four or five minutes?
I mean, we're.
Yeah, can you summarize it in five minutes, McKenna?
Four or five minutes, replacing the entire zoning ordinance.
Yeah, she, she came all the way from where, wherever. I don't, I don't care, it's too late to watch the news when they get home anyway, so come on up. It's fine.
We are the news.
What'd she say?
We are the news.
In the city, near you. Our ordinance is being updated tonight.
I'm ready to be updated. Goodbye.
Oh, come on. Those are our Planning Commission colleagues.
The Planning Commission people laugh during the zoning.
Okay. Well, we can probably do this in six minutes.
So I'm timing you, just playing though.
Okay.
Go ahead, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present all of our hard work regarding the zoning ordinance update tonight. A lot of key figures here have contributed greatly to the success of the zoning ordinance update. Like to give a shout out to our city manager, Senator Walton. Thanks for all your support and all of your hard work in the steering committee. Also, thank you for our finance director, our assistant city manager, our community economic development director, and our councilmember DeMonico and councilmember Baker, who also helped provide, oh, you know, come on, our former planning commissioner and now councilmember Muniz, Cobb Muniz. Thank you so much, everyone. Oh, and our fire chief too. I'd also like to thank my colleague too.
You just used four minutes of your six minutes.
Right. I think it's all about that.
Exactly, I was about to say the same thing.
All the things. Well, we have generated a lot of momentum around this project. The project, well, I'll talk to you about the partnership in a minute, but our agenda today is to talk to you about the need for the zoning ordinance, the partnership, and the project itself, how we updated the zoning ordinance. So the need, well, it's needed because the zoning ordinance is outdated. It was last outdated a decade ago. And a best way to implement all of our master plans, our nine mile strategic corridor plan is through the zoning ordinance update. So we had a meeting and with administration and acknowledged some pain points or challenges within the existing ordinance. And we put together a list of high priorities from the, the meeting results. And the top priority was to streamline development review process. Well, you can see that we did that in Article 12. Another example is we uplifted Kelly Road and Nine Mile Corridors to create mixed use district. Well, we did that in Articles Two and Four. So we are acknowledging that we heard you and we've changed our ordinance considerably. We entered a partnership. This is what I want to talk to you about at the beginning. Our, we are forming a partnership and continued relationship with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready Team. And the redevelopment, redevelopment ready communities, I think you saw the letter of support in your packet, but they have spoken heaps and bounds about this project and how we are creating an innovative way to engage with steering committees and also update a zoning ordinance. And the ending result of our zoning ordinance is innovative, it's best of its kind, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation wants to use us as an example. So congratulations, that's why we gave all the claps around. Congratulations, everyone, for all of your hard work. We can see our community partners here. The MEDC also helps support and funding the project, which is pivotal to move this forward. Now we're talking about the project itself. Here are the, the talking points for the project. We, we had a, the, the project prioritized community engagement, I'll say that. We also want to show some foundations for the update, some information that we pulled from to get to update the ordinance. We created interactive worksheets, we'll outline our key changes and the accolades that we received so far. So the project is founded in community engagement. As you can see, we have a list of community engagement opportunities that wrote the ordinance itself. Staff facilitated, the community wrote the ordinance. I would like to highlight the seven steering committee meetings, that's why I wanted to give all the roundup applause, the planning commissioners who just left because they talked about it 11 times. And we featured this at the Grashit Cruise, and we also had public participation boards. This is Grashit Cruise, public participation boards at City Hall. Hopefully, some of you had the opportunity to put your sticky where you wanted to see the most change. Here's our final steering committee meeting. Beautiful, really, really beautiful, you guys. Okay. Foundation for the project. So these are documents that we used to create the project. This is existing text and research and best practices from urban planning that we pulled from. Of course, we used the master plan, the 2040 master plan, and also the nine mile strategic corridor plan. Along that, we also used the image of the city by Kevin Lynch, which is a staple for urban planners, and also the High Cost of Free Parking, which is also another staple book for urban planners. And within the steering committee, we created interactive worksheets. And actually, we're using our interactive worksheets material to apply for an award with the Michigan Association of Planning. We think that we demonstrated a best practice through laying the foundation of our worksheets in education. We use education as a tool to garner support and understanding of technical urban planning practices. So you can see, we had some fun with the worksheets. We had a quest for discovering missing middle. We had a bingo chart to discover what kind of land uses we wanted in the city. What else? We had, we decided on facade materials, so exterior building materials, the good, the bad, the ugly. We had some fun and we made planning. We had some fun and we made planning topics approachable that usually are more technical. The worksheets, here are some examples. Bingo. And more examples. Okay, so now we're at the key changes part. I think we have two minutes left, which is great. Um, Article two, my colleague Laura Hall, senior principal planner, will take this away.
Okay, okay, thank you, everyone. Um, so we'll keep this part short, but we did want to highlight some of the key changes in the zoning ordinance update that were really necessary to streamline it and make it more user-friendly. Um, so in the zoning ordinance that you have, you wanted to go to page six. This contains the new, uh, lists of zoning districts. And, um, you'll note that we consolidated districts. So before, the city used to have like five different residential districts. Now there's only two, um, for ease of development. Um, we created these mixed-use districts that align better with the city's existing commercial corridors. So, um, there's, you know, specific, uh, mixed-use districts for Kelly, Ten Mile, Stevens, a different one, a different mixed-use corridor for Nine Mile, and then also Eight Mile and Grasha are treated differently in that respect, um, with the intensity of uses building based on the intensity of the corridors. We also, uh, created this, um, summary use table, and this is on, um, let's see, this is on page six, I believe. I'm sorry.
Nine?
Yes, this is on page nine. So this presents an at-a-glance look at the, um, different uses that are allowed in the city and where they can go based on those zoning districts. And we included a lot of new uses that currently aren't in your code today that you want to see more of. So artisan spaces, uh, missing middle housing, breweries. Um, and in the table, there's either a P, which denotes a principal-permitted use, so that's a use by right. And then, um, the S in the table signifies the special land use, which you just went through tonight with the gas station. Um, so this makes it a lot more user-friendly and easier for developers to quickly see if, um, they should be proposing a project on a certain property, uh, within the city.
Uh, so Article six, I'll talk to you about Article six, which is our Schedule of Regulations, Building Forum, Design Standards, on page twenty-seven. The main thing to understand with this article is that we established two overlays. And overlays are tools to implement specific design standards for designated areas, like, uh, major commercial areas or highly frequented areas. Um, overlays are used to protect valuable real estate within a city. This is a tool to protect the city's image along highly visible corridors. So that's why we recommend overlays, as opposed to creating a, a whole new zoning district. We can have overlays and have higher design standards, including minimum building height requirements. So within the city, we have two overlays. One here is the central, um, downtown overlay, and then the other here is the Grasha Gateway overlay. And both of these overlays are, again, created by all of our immense public engagement that we've, that we've enjoyed throughout the process, and also all of our documents, like the master plan and the nine-mile strategic corridor plan. Um, so here are our overlays today. They have higher design standards. They also do not allow certain types of uses. For example, in the central downtown overlay, a drive-through restaurant is not allowed, um, as Laura discussed within the use table.
We also made a lot of changes to the parking, um, article, Article eight. Um, so we've added a lot of flexibility and modernized the parking ratios, the minimum parking that's required for different uses based on, um, recent best practices from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Institute. Um, we've also added some additional standards that will promote safety on the roads, not just for vehicles, but for pedestrians as well, um, and make the flow of traffic, uh, easier. And then in landscaping, this was one of those pain points that we identified early on in the process that the landscaping standards today are confusing and developers often don't, don't get it right on the first couple of tries when they submit plans. So we streamlined those. Um, we made it really clear what's required for different uses, um, and tried to quantify, um, those requirements a little bit better.
Development Plan Reviews, page one oh one. We provided flow charts in the ordinance to guide the reader, and this is, again, another measure that we took to be more user-friendly in understanding how the site plan and special lane use process works. We also established three types of development reviews, the plot plan review, a sketch plan review, and a site plan review. The sketch plan review is different from the existing ordinance because it meets RRC, Redevelopment Ready Communities' best practices in allowing for administrative review of a minor, um, building project, like a construction of an addition to a convenience store, for example. And we have the plans, uh, or the flow charts represented here that are within the ordinance.
Okay. Um, we also revamped the planned unit development, the PUD section of your ordinance. So this gives the city more flexibility in requiring, um, best practices, um, for development and, uh, requiring more of a public benefit when you have large-scale projects and mixed-use transformative projects. Um, we also streamline the process so that it's, um, incentivizing developers to go this route as opposed to just going the conventional, um, zoning process.
And again, we've generated so much support for this project that the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Community Planner wrote a letter of support for our project that's featured on the screen and within your packets. And like I've mentioned previously, we are applying for the Best Practice Award from the Michigan Association Planning Chapter of the American Planning Association.
All right.
All right. Go East Point. So we'd like to say another thank you because we're so appreciative of this great project in the community for all of our steering committee meeting members. They're featured on the screen here today. I won't, um, recite everyone's name because I think we're down to the minute. But thank you for all of your support, and it was a lot of fun working with everyone.
Thank you.
And we're here for...
Thank you for all your hard work and everyone that assisted in doing this. Thank you to the residents as well for helping with this.
You could have taken a half hour. It's, I think they need a great round of applause for what they did.
Absolutely.
Thank the city.
Thank you again. I believe you have motion? Thank you, I believe you have any question before they sit down?
Can just make one comment?
Yes.
Uh, thank you again, Laura and Mara, great presentation. And of course, as you said, I've, uh, been in front of this many times now, having been at the planning commission. But I just wanted to say I have, uh, you know, sent a lot of minor things over that wouldn't be worth, you know, a couple, you know, spelling errors I caught or whatnot, uh, over to them. But I guess the one biggest thing, I guess, I just wanted to make sure of is that, um, our current ordinance, we're not missing anything in the new ordinance, just in, in general. And I guess that's my biggest concern with changing an entire ordinance, not just, you know, that it's a zoning, if we did that with any ordinance, right? It's, well, and it's a very lengthy one. And I guess that, um, is my, I, I think, I mean, every, all the different topics we've talked about are great. I think it's very forward-looking. But that's just one, so I know you, you know, here and there, um, have talked about that, but I guess that's just my biggest concern in, in general.
I would say that throughout this process, uh, Mara and I both went systematically through the zoning ordinance. It does have a completely new organization, and that's because it matches up with the Michigan Association of Planning's best practices for layout and user, you know, uh, to make it more user-friendly. Um, but Mara and I have gone through the different sections of your current ordinance and where items were not relevant, you know, we've stricken them and proposed new language. Um, some sections are almost entirely new. Others had more carryover. Um, but I think we've done a really thorough and diligent job of making sure that nothing is slipping, uh, between the cracks.
Appreciate it, and I think, like you said, I think a very technical thing's been presented very easily for everybody in the audience and up here. Um, if you are not a professional planner, as I believe none of us are, right? The five of us on council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for making it user-friendly. Um, if you haven't already sent us the, the need, the partnership, the project, I'd love to get, um, get a copy of that.
Any other comments? I believe we have motion in support, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curley?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Great job. Next item is discussion.
All right, thank you. We did it.
Next item, discussion on MedStar contract. I'm gonna give this to our, well, uh, Ms., oh, you put this on here, okay. Ms. DeMonaco, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked this, that this be added to the agenda, uh, for today at our last meeting, I asked that. I asked that because, um, our current contract expired, um, I think somewhere around the end of last year. And of course, we had the other discussion at the last meeting, but I figured that, uh, the one thing I wanted on the agenda, not a discussion on the whole contract, but on the second paragraph in it about the contract being able to be renewed for up to two additional two-year periods and renewals at the sole discretion of the city and will automatically extend the term of this contract. Uh, the city will document its exercise renewal options via contract change notice. That's the part I want to discuss, just so that we are still, like, in a ongoing contract with MedStar, and then we could have separate discussions if necessary in the future. So if no one had questions, then I guess I can make, uh, let me find the motion I'd written up. Uh, motion to extend the MedStar contract that expired December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two for a two-year period, ending December tw- December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, as specified in that second paragraph, um, of the Emergency Medical Response ALS and Transportation Services Contract, and authorize the city manager to execute any documents that would be related to this renewal.
Counsel?
Warren?
Any discussion?
I, yes, I have a question. How, um, maybe this, I don't know if you have the answer, Mr. DeMonaco or our city manager would be better suited to answer. Because this was brought up after our discussion at our last council meeting regarding potentially entering a new contract with MedStar. So how do the two relate or not? Either.
I guess you, to, to me, I, I think, um, we, well, we should extend this so that we're under contract specifically in the date range with them. And to me, it would be if, you know, if they want to try and provide, you know, if the city wants to provide additional, um, service or something, we can, I think, always amend a contract.
Ms. Walton, can you add anything?
Sure, um, so we actually have a communication from the CEO of MedStar to continue providing service. Um, we are not opposed to extending the agreement. Um, as the fire union has mentioned, we have been in communication to alleviate the staffing issue. Uh, so I do fully expect that to move forward. So we are not, um, contesting approving the extension of the current MedStar contract. Um, if there was a change which, uh, has been transparent and related to the union, uh, we would be willing to bring that conversation back, um, on expanding the services of MedStar. But at this time, we think that the extension of the current contract is sufficient.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, item is approval of purchase, two thousand twenty-three F three-five-zero truck for Department of Public Works and Service. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve of the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three F three-five-zero pickup truck from Michigan deal contract zero seven-one B seven-seven-zero-zero-one-eight-one from the low bidder, Gorno Ford Incorporated of Woodhaven, Michigan, for a total amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
Support. Discussion, counsel? Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Item K, receiving file the Planning Commission's two thousand twenty-two annual report.
So moved.
Support. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item L, appointment to the Assessment Board of Review, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move, um, to appoint Walter Martin to the Assessment Board of Review as a regular member with a term to expire March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in support?
I had a quick, quick question, Madam Mayor, uh, general one. I guess, um, can the city council please be alerted of resignations of board members? I guess first, our chair, the Beautification Commission, recently resigned, and I'm not sure if, um, I saw a communication go out about that. So the rest of the commission knows. So Lynn Salafia's resigned from the commission. But I also, I did not know that Jaclyn Makin had resigned from the Board of Review. I learned that in our council packet.
Thank you.
So, uh, in the future here, we'll alert the rest of city council, Ms. Walton, about resignations from commissions.
So we didn't provide a specific communication on everyone that had resigned. But Otis, our administrative assistant, um, actually sends out a communication with a listing of the current memberships. Uh, the initial listing went out, uh, prior to us being informed of the resignation, and one was sent actually the same day, uh, showing the availability of that role. Um, if you'd like that more specified, so you're aware of the specifics, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, just when someone resigns, just to forward it, because I guess I was surprised. I didn't even know this was, uh, a possibility to appoint a new member, and then there's already an appointment on the agenda. So, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion in support, correct? Please call the roll, thank you.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Next item, M, appointment to the Beautification Commission, counsel?
Mayor, I'll motion we appoint Kevin Murphy to the Beautification Commission with a term to expire October fifteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Item N, we almost there, everyone? The reappointment to the DDA Board Commission, counsel?
Mayor, I move that we, uh, reappoint Lisa Dai-Hightower to the Downtown Development Authority Board with a term to expire September first, two thousand twenty-six.
Support. Motion in support, any discussion? Senior, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, item O, approval of attendance of Mayor Owens for the Smart Cities Connect Spring Conference and Expo, May sixteenth through the eighteenth. So I put this on here, um, for approval by council. Uh, Smart Cities Connect, when I went to DC, they were down there also, and they are with the Women's Mayor Innovation as well. And they also give a lot of information about grants and also mayors all across the country goes to events like this. And so when I was, um, elected mayor in the beginning, I was elected during COVID. So everything was shut down. I think even the governor, all the way up to the governor, business owners, nobody knew what to do and how to do it. So the first couple of years being the mayor, it was very new for, I think, anybody. And so there's new things and new development and new ways of doing things than the old ways. So these conferences helped me to learn what other cities are doing, whether they're big or small. Um, and also in respect to what you said earlier, weak, weak mayor form and strong mayor form. Actually, when I had went to some of these conferences, I actually met a mayor in a strong form of government, per se, and she has less, uh, residents than I do. So it depends on what city you live in or what state you live in, that, what requires how, how, how it was ran. And she has done a lot. So being around other communities and other smaller cities, they all come together and tell you how you can manage your community. And so sometimes when I go to other, uh, places and I learn what other people are doing, they have surpassed Michigan in a lot of ways, with economic development, with housing, infrastructure development, that we don't even know what they're doing until I go. And you can ask the city manager and assistant city manager. Every time I come back or when I'm down there, I let them know about grants and also what they're doing and how we can do it. Even when, um, I came back from DC, I contacted, um, our attorney and let them know. Another... Even when I came back from DC, I contacted our attorney and let them know, another attorney, how they were helping other communities when they had lead pipe issues. And we were just, well, we already had those issues, but it became, it superseded us very vastly. And I just happened to be in DC at the time. And truth be told, even before, we already knew we had lead pipes, but we didn't know it got to that extent when it was tested. Even though I knew this when I was a councilwoman at the time, I called the filter companies myself, and I got documentation. And I believe, Mr. Blum, you, I don't know if you remember this, when I was trying to do a partnership with a filtering company, and they pay half and the city pay half so that we can get filters for the city of East Point. And that was four years ago. And then I believe you said, I don't know, we can do that, or I don't know if you remember that discussion. But I reached out to filtering companies because I knew we had lead in our pipes, so we can do something about it. I did that four years ago. So, and I did that on my own. But I think you said we don't have the money at the time to do that. We can't have, we couldn't pay half. I don't know if you remember that discussion.
I do, but I don't remember the actual specifics.
Right. So some of the things that you see about lead and things like that, I've been working on a lot of things before it came to the news. Behind the scenes, I've been working and doing the work without knowing how to do it. But God has helped me to do those things, but also put me in the places of people that already, that can show me how to do it. And so dealing with these different mayors, different city managers, and different people that deal with different infrastructures in different cities and have smaller cities, they teach me how to have a smarter city and how to do, to deal with solar systems, to do with economic development, the ecosystem and things like that. And telling me if you have a smaller city, how to do this. If we're stuck somewhere and we don't have a solution and they can help me with that solution, I contact the city manager. When I came back from DC, I told her about grants. Again, I told her about the attorney, about the lead pipe. So when I go down there, and any of the council members can tell you, when we go to a conference, we're not just hanging out, it's work, because it's workshops back to back to back to back. And sometimes you get really tired, but you in there to learn and to invest in your community. And I take time away from my children to help invest in this community. So I'm just addressing what, you know, some of the things that you were talking about, about weak form and strong form and things like that, however you want to see it, that is what has been written, but that's your opinion, and everybody has one, and that's fine. But again, there are smaller cities, smaller than the city of East Point, that have what you want to call it, strong form of government. And they also tell me, okay, I have a smaller city, this is what we use, this is what grant we use, this is what we're doing in our city with the capacity that you have. And so I take upon those notes and bring it to the community, then I talk to our city manager and ask her, can we do it? And then she look, and then she does more research and seeing can we do those things? Because she might say, oh, I never heard of that. Thank you, Mayor. I talked to Ms. Holman, and it's some grants that I also sent to Director Rohib that I might get. So it's a lot of different things that I learn from these communities that Michigan probably hasn't done yet. And if you look at also who's going, you see the city of Detroit is going as well. So the city of Detroit might be a bigger community, but even with our fire department, we do more runs than any other city in McComb County that's bigger than us. So sometimes going and seeing what bigger cities are doing, and we use those same tools to help prepare us because we're doing more of the work. It helps me to better serve the community, and it helps me to learn as well. And so even though we have a city manager that oversees the day-to-day operations as elected officials, you should want your elected officials to know what's going on and understand when the city manager comes to us and tells us who you elected, we should know at least some idea of what's going on. We should have some idea what our city manager say. You elected us to make sure that we know what we're talking about, and if we don't, she does the research and backs it up, and then we back it up too. So you've got checks and balances. So, you know, if you elected me to be your mayor, you should want me to be educated and know the things that's going around us, whether we can use it or not, to better serve you, to better use your taxes. And so that is why I am going. And again, workshops are to help us be better leaders, help us to manage money better. We are over almost a $52 million budget, and you elect us to be over $52 million. We should know, and you should want us to know, how to better utilize that money since you voted for us. And I don't want, if I know about grants or I know we don't need that because another community doesn't need that and they're using other tools not to spend money and doing it another way, you should want me in the room. You should want your mayor in the room with other people that are doing stuff for their communities, and you should want that in your community. Again, whether you like the mayor or not, this is your community, and you live here. And if you live here, whether you like anyone up here or not, if it's going to better serve you, your children, your community, that's what you should want. It's not about me, it's not about anybody up here. It's about serving the community. And that is why I go to these things, to better serve the community, to better educate myself, to help the city manager, to help whosever up here. Also, anyone up here is able to go. Some events and conferences, I, even with Harvard, I think I, they were asking the mayors who actually went to, what were they asking? To see if you can suggest other people to go? And I suggested three other council members to go because I went and things like that. So I want all the councils to go. If anybody on the council wanted to go with me, phenomenal. Now you got two people up here that's educated, because what I don't remember, she can remember and vice versa. So it's not just the mayor going. I think two council members went to an event in Lansing last week. I didn't, I didn't go. But whatever tools they picked up, education they picked up, they share with us to help us better serve the community. And so anytime I go to a conference, and to also add to it, I didn't ask the councilwoman, Lucido, who's now our commissioner, I didn't ask her to give me that money. It surprised me that she did that. But if she did that, that should let you know that she agrees that the mayor, that she still lives in the city, she might be the commissioner, but she's still a resident of the city, and she wants to make sure that her mayor gets the proper education or also the resources to better serve her. That's why she did it. I was surprised too. But also anytime I'm going somewhere, sometimes I pay for it out of my own pocket. And also, I had told the city manager to go other ways to save money. So I'm not, I'm not riding first class, I'm not at the Hilton Suites and have servants. We do, we budget everything the best to our ability. So it's just not money and spending for a free trip. I'm going to get educated, and like I said, it's the job, we have to wake up at 6:00 in the morning, and sometimes I don't even get to sleep in my room. And we're very tired. It's a conference to learn, to get resources. It's work. I go out there to work and to get educated, to better serve you. And if you want to call me and say, Mayor Owens, can you tell me what you did at the conference? And if you want to come with me, come on, we can both learn together. But I'm just saying that to say, anything that I receive, I bring it back to the city. And sometimes it can be overwhelming workshops, because, and then sometimes you can't get in all the workshops, it can be so many people there that you have to sign up. Sometimes it's first comes, first served. So it can be a mass amount of things at these workshops, everybody's trying to learn. And then I also ask the city manager, what do we need? When I go down there, I already have in my mind, what do we need as a community? So when I look at the workshops, I know exactly what workshop I'm going to. So if our community doesn't fit that workshop, why would I go to a workshop and it's for a certain community that's way bigger than ours and trying to build a, you know, for instance, a Disneyland, I'm not going to that workshop because I know that can't fit us. But I go to workshops that I know would benefit us, to hear about, to hear from specialists and people that have the education to help us do that. So just to let you know, why do I go to these things? And again, it's very beneficial for the community and the city. So I just want to just point that out, and if any of the council members want to ask me any questions. And then also, when I first got elected, we were, I think it was like probably the first month I was elected, I don't know, Ms. Holman, the Ford Foundation contacted us, I remember, I think you remember with the container homes. That was huge for us with the Habitat for Humanity. It was new development. And so that was new for us, that was huge. And so I know that they're doing that in the city of Detroit, which is a bigger community for us, but at the time, the city, the residents didn't think that, you know, would fit us. And so it was a resident that would tell you that was here, that I went to every house predominantly in that area by myself, went door to door, and showed them the designs and to see how they felt about it. And majority of them liked it, they just didn't show up. That's why it didn't pass, because they have to work and they have something to do. But I took the time as the mayor to go door to door to see what the residents wanted. I did. But also going to other communities and other cities that helped me to learn about different housing options like that in that container homes was veterans. It really was. It was, it was new housing for veterans, and it was just a test by the Ford Foundation. And we didn't pass that, of course, but having a partnership with the Ford Foundation, that would have been huge because they would have helped us sustain a lot of things. They would have helped us with our school, they would have helped us with our roads, they probably would have paid for our lead pipes. I don't know, that's what partnerships do. And so, again, our job up here is to better serve you. And if I don't have the education or the means or the resources to do that, then I'm limited. And I want us to be a city that's unlimited with resources. Counsel?
Well, Mayor, according to the note from the city manager, you've got $407.03 left in your training budget. So I'd motion to go to this conference with that amount, but I guess I've got a question because, as you mentioned, previous Mayor Pro Tem Lucido donated $400 of her training budget to you. So I'm, yeah, at that last meeting. So I'm surprised that you still have $407 left. I thought the whole point was that was because it was going to be more expensive. So I don't really understand the math.
Yeah. Please.
So the registration for the event in DC was actually waived. I think it was a first-time event registration. So it was the lodging and the flight that was approved by council, and the actual event was waived as a first-time attendee.
And this is also waived as well?
Okay. Well, I mean, I'd be willing to motion then that the $407.03 remaining in your budget be used for this trip from the city.
Second.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Payroll and bills, counsel?
Mayor, I'll motion that we pay the bills in the amount of, if I can get to the bottom
I support.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabunice?
Yes.
Next is the hearing of the public. The hearing of the public is now open. Give me one second, Ms. Holman. Good evening.
I am here tonight because I am the lucky new recipient of a frivolous and wasteful code violation here in East Point. For those interested in a timeline, my boyfriend and I bought a house in December 2011. About a year later, we got engaged, and a year after that, we got married. The house remains in the same hands since December 15th, 2011. Let's fast forward to April 2023, and I'm seeing posts on Facebooks from fellow East Point residents receiving code violation notices from McKenna, working as the interim East Point Building Department, for having their addresses spelled out in words and not in five-digit numbers. These folks have owned their homes since 1988 and 2002. Based on their tickets, I have sat with anticipation to receive the same ticket, and yesterday was my lucky day. This violation was brashly taped to our front door. It was clearly prepared here in City Hall. It's not like they have a photocopier in their car, because they've had the budget to buy computers for inside their vehicles for nearly five years and still haven't managed to implement those. These inspectors issuing these tickets have clearly been instructed to hunt for homes in conflict with Section R 319 of the Michigan Residential Code of 2015. Is there nothing better for these building department employees to be doing, like enforcing the rope light ban, ticketing commercial blight, ticketing residential properties with unsafe steps that postal workers use every day? So I have some questions. Who is this violation even issued to? Sure, it was taped to my door, but there's nothing written in the location line. So was I even given proper written notice of this violation? How many of these tickets have been written in the past six months, and why on earth is this a priority for the building department? When did the city of East Point adopt the Michigan Residential Code of 2015? Newsflash, you didn't. And if, let's pretend that we did, 102.2 states that that code does not nullify any local laws. East Point Code in Article 18, Section 50-189, every residential building must be identified facing the street in at least three-inch height. We comply. In Michigan Residential Code 2015, Section 102.7 states that the building that already legally exists at the date of adoption of MRC 2015 shall be committed, shall be permitted to continue without change. 2011 is in fact before 2015. Pizza delivery workers may not like finding our address, but I always leave a comment that we're the one with all of the political yard signs, and we've never missed a delivery to date. When the city of East Point faced a full-blown disaster in the building department due to the former building official creating such a hostile environment, they opted to hire a private company, McKenna, to be the building department in the interim. But a major part of that contract was the incentivization of code violation tickets, and McKenna makes more money when McKenna writes more tickets. This is shameful, frivolous, and frankly, a complete waste of taxpayer funds. And I will end with this.
Your time is up, ma'am.
16370955 does not have their address listed in the building, and I'm sure the fire department would love that code violation ticket.
Anyone else?
Cindy Federley. As an elected official...
Mayor Owens, it is not your job to lecture me. I understand what conferences are about, and had you listened to my comments instead of immediately assuming it's because I don't like you, which has nothing to do with my comments, I suggested the city manager would benefit the city more by attending the conference if anybody goes. I think it's a waste of money to go to a conference that is all about smart development. We don't have urban transit. We don't need all of what the agenda appeared to be about. It is intended for larger cities. This has nothing to do with personality. It has to do with the city taxpayer money. And when residents make comments that the mayor should go to these things, they should look at what it means to be a weak mayoral system. You don't set policy with how the city is run. That comes from the city manager. She runs the day-to-day operations. You can suggest things, but I think the city would benefit more if she or the assistant city manager attended that type of a conference. If we're going to spend the money, put it where it's really going to make a difference. I've not seen any new grants come in from all of the meetings you've been attending and things. Tell us what you've done with that. Having, meeting with an attorney about the lead pipes? Anything come of that? No. So justify. Don't lecture me, I don't need that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, or I'll say good night. I'd like to say thank you for keeping that Kmart building clean. I thought I was going to have to address it again because I seen it last week, but you did what you did, and thank you. I would like to address this banded pickup truck. It got a snow blayer on the back of it, and it's sitting on flat tire. It's a couple doors down the street from me, and it's been sitting down there, I believe, ever since December. And it's rusty, it's a bad eyesore. Okay, now let me get to it. It's been sitting there for months, and it make the neighborhood look bad. Then you have new neighbor who, children moved, I mean, they moved in there last year, and they play football, and they have a basketball rim in the street when it get warm. it get warm. My car have been hit several times because I have one that parked on the street. Uh, it was just, it just got hit just last week by the ball. Uh, even though the kid said he apologized, but what if my, um, windshield had got cracked by that ball? Um, let's see. Then, oh, let me hear, I only got a couple minutes. Then the basketball hoop in the street. Now let me talk about this barking dog that behind me. I believe it's new neighbors that live behind me because I never had this problem before. This bu, this dog always barking. When this dog bark, it bark for at least forty-five minutes and longer, nonstop until somebody come home or whatever stopped this dog from barking. Uh, I never heard a dog bark like this nonstop. This is a headache, totally a headache. You can hear this dog barking. It's like an echo inside of my house when you, when this dog bark. And it's not only one dog now behind me, it's another dog. And they do not clean up the feces behind this. As we all know, this can cause red. Um, I think this did. Oh, okay. And, um, I'm getting a little tired of have to do all the work in my neighborhood because I'm the one that when they were stealing cars a couple of years ago, and, um, my husband went down there to try to knock on the door to wake the neighbor up and let him know that they was out there, had stole their car. They had actually put the car in the middle of the street. And he kind of scared them off. And we did call the police and the police did come, beat on the door till they came. But, um, the next day I did send out flyer to let the neighbors know what was going on and if they can turn the porch light on or kind of like look out. But they don't really do what they need to do. But I know I cannot do that anymore because it's danger for me be on somebody porch trying to, um, send out flyers. So I'm asking, maybe you guys can send out some kind of ordinance to let them know what's going on, uh, what they supposed to do by keeping their property clean up?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for respecting the time. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi, thanks for having me again. Um, as a property owner and taxpayer in the city of, uh, East Point, um, our population here is actually larger than, uh, the, the something, the city of Highland Park. They're going to be a smart city very soon. And it's a lot of other smaller cities that are starting to become smart cities. And I, I do support as a taxpayer, our mayor participate with other mayors that are a part of smart cities. Also, please, the Street of Springer Avenue, Springer, from Boulder to Kelly or even David Craters, please address the potholes. Not even the potholes, we just need the street repaved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Say no. The second hearing of the public is now closed. Mayor and council report, starting with our councilwoman.
I'm going to reserve comments till our next meeting.
Okay. Councilmember DeMonico?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. A bunch of good things been happening in the city. Uh, we had a great, uh, spring cleanup at the Urban Seed. Um, they're getting ready for business for this year. Um, if, if you haven't been, go by. It's Kitty Corner from the fire station. But, uh, congrats to Bill Randazzo, John and Shay Hoffman, Peggy DiMecchio, Lori, uh, Craig Wodecki, I know is always over there volunteering and all the other volunteers. Sorry, I don't know all your names, uh, doing a great job over there. If you can stop by or help them out. I know they're doing another planting coming up and I, I don't have the date on me, but you can find it on Facebook or their website. Uh, also, we did, uh, the Beautification Commission did its annual litter cleanup. Huge success, uh, forty-seven bags of garbage. Um, you know, it's been going up each year. Uh, more and more, uh, uh, people are showing up. We had thirty people show up this year. Hopefully, maybe it could be forty and like sixty bags of garbage or something in a, uh, next year. Uh, the, the food was amazing also. Thank you to Andy Boyer for, um, donating the food and preparing it. And everybody that showed up was able to eat also. So next year, come out for some free food after you pick up a little trash in the city. I'd like to thank the commissioners too, Lakita Cobb, Rachel Sullivan, Craig Wodecki, Paul Colby, Pam Russell, and, uh, Sine. Uh, they do a great job putting everything on that the Beautification Commission does. Uh, they showed up and did the work too. And again, food from Andy. And I'd like to thank Darren, uh, Darren Paolucci, Kim Holman, and Michael Phillips, our couple DPW workers and our assistant city manager for coming out. And thank you, Councilwoman Communis and, uh, Mayor Owens for showing up also and picking up some trash with us. Uh, always a good time. And sorry, Mr. Rich Albright, thank you also for, uh, coming out. Um, this is why I write things down so I don't forget this. Uh, had a good time. Actually, I think my favorite piece of garbage, uh, Mr. Albright found, he found a table, uh, like a plastic, you know, lawn, uh, lawn table. Three of the legs were missing, so we just had the fourth leg to throw away. Uh, hopefully the other three found their way into a, some sort of dumpster. But also, uh, the library, um, will be doing their book sale, um, May 4th through 6th. And I mentioned that because the Beautification Commission also, uh, turns out with them. And we do a plant exchange. So on, the plant exchange though is just on the 6th, on Saturday. If you're free, 10 to 1:30 PM on Saturday, May 6th, come out, get some plants from other people. Usually our front yard gets overgrown real quick. So I'll, I've dug some out and some people took those home. If you're just looking to get some plants for your front yard, come out, grab them, swap, do whatever you want. They'll be there. Um, and like I said, the library will be selling books and CDs and all that kind of stuff like they do for their media sales. Uh, the budget's next week, so looking forward to that. Uh, Mayor's not looking forward to that by the look on her face a second ago. Uh, Tuesday and Wednesday at 6:00 PM, so come out a hour earlier than usual. Um, uh, we'll do Tuesday for sure. I know sometimes we've tried to put it on one day, but I don't know how we'll have it set up this year. Um, and then also, let's see, sorry, a couple, a couple other quick items. Uh, Memorial Day Parade is coming up. It's on Memorial Day in East Point like usual, Monday, May 29th. Uh, if you're looking to take part in it, we can always use more participants. We, we do already have more than last year, so that's very exciting. But if you know any groups that'd be willing to, uh, go in the parade, uh, let us know by May 8th. Uh, just need to know a little bit of information about what you'll be showing up with. Just send, send us an email, send me an email if you don't know where to find it, but we're on Facebook and, uh, we've got a website, ACFVO.com, the Association for a Community Fraternal and Veterans Organizations. Very, very short, uh, group name. Uh, congrats to Matt Merlo, our Deputy Police Chief also on retirement, uh, in just a couple days here. And then, um, do have to say, I can't believe our code enforcement team though is wasting time on these cursive addresses. I gotta say, I hope this changes soon. There's much better things we could be spending our time on. Um, it'd be zero value in complying with that. Anyway, you'll have, uh, numbers for your address and set of cursive letters, I guess. But that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Um, just congrats to Matt Merlo. Um, you know, I've had the opportunity to talk with him a few times and, uh, just overall nice guy, good guy. And, uh, you know, I wish him nothing but the best. Sorry I didn't make it out to the cleanup. Um, I know the, uh, sometime it conflicts with my schedule, but I remember the first time I did it with, uh, Councilman DeMonico. We were in Eight Mile and it's, it's always a, a mission to see how many of either bags he can get and what's the most unique thing we can, we can find. So, um, sorry I missed the table, but, uh, thank you guys for, for what you did. And, uh, that is all that I have.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I too wish I was there to help clean up, but I was in Florida picking blueberries. Yeah, no. Um, anyway, a couple things. Uh, the lady, the lady with the fence, is she still here?
No.
She's gone. Um, if she said what was, is true, that more than two years ago, it was approved by someone from our city and then recently semi, somebody came out and gave them a ticket, we got, we, we need to find out if that's true or not because she shouldn't be having to flip that thing around. Um, particularly she was told that it was okay. Secondly, the big boy has a lot of semi trucks. What they do say, seven there or the, at the, I don't know if it's permissible for the owner to say, yeah, you can park in my parking lot. If it's against the rules, they should be notified within, before the week is over. You are not allowed to park. You don't have to give them a ticket, but say, you are not allowed to park here. I mean, why are they even there for such a long time? Um, and you know, we give a lot of proclamations out and I, I love everyone, every one of them to death. I, I just think they're great. But wouldn't it be great if we sat here and read a proclamation honoring the thirty-two, thirty-three thousand citizens of East Point? Wouldn't that be nice to read the proclamation for the citizens of our city? Um, lastly, I know we had a big agenda. We had a difference of opinions. It wasn't an all-five, the nothing vote. And that's okay. But I, I ran across something that I just, I'm going to read a little bit, um, called happiness is. And I would like to have everybody leave here tonight. Maybe one of the things you can think about, but happiness is. I gotta put my glasses on again. Happiness is the smell of fresh, clean sheets. Happiness is the first sip of coffee in the morning. Our thunderstorms. Are taking an aptitude nap and catching lightning bugs. Show of hands, but what I mean, you don't even know what, Mayor doesn't know what lightning bugs are.
I know, I know.
She didn't raise it.
Right, that part.
The smell of freshly cut grass. That's true too, isn't it? Visiting a favorite place of the past. Happiness is taking a, talking and laughing with friends. Our blankets on the back of the couch to snuggle up with. Hot sand and cool water on my toes. Are walking barefoot in the summertime. Remember the magical part of my childhood. Rainbows. Happiness is looking back at photos. Are gazing upon the amazing sunrise or sunset. Happiness is finding a butterfly. Are gazing up to the stars on a clear night. Thank you everyone for watching and for coming and God bless you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I ain't forgot what happiness is getting out of here, really.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, yeah. But I want to thank everyone who stayed and came out. It was, it was filled in here, but you know, everybody has to go to work or have children or have other things to do. But thank you for being a part of your community. Um, before we leave, um, our councilwoman just reminded me that our assistant city manager, Ms. Holman's birthday was Sunday, so happy birthday.
Yay! Happy birthday to you!
Happy birthday. And also, um, she came out to the, even though it was her birthday, she wasn't feeling, you know, she was feeling a little bit under the weather. She still came out to clean up. So thank you so much, Ms. Holman. Ever since she's been hired, she's been, uh, superseding, um, what we ask of her. Thank you very much for all you do. And every, uh, director and person that works for the city of East Point, every commissioner as well. Also, want to thank the, the beautification and everyone that came out and partnered up with the city to clean our city. That was, makes us a, a even more smarter city because we want to clean our city. So I thank you. Also want to thank the council, uh, for, uh, approving me to go to, uh, Colorado. And also, uh, again, if you want to go, just let me know. Um, or also if you see something on the agenda that you think, uh, the workshop I should go to, you know, as a recommendation, I'll go to that as well. So that being said, Happy Mother's Day to everyone and, um, let's keep this city going. Um, motion for?
Hold on.
Support. Motion to support, please call the roll. I know, I'm sorry. Let me, can I have the names again?
Yes.
I think she wanted the motion in second.
Yes.
You, Mr. Curly and, um, Ms. Communis.
Councilman Harvey Curly made the motion. I supported.
Sorry about that. Councilman Curly?
Yes.
Councilman Communis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Before I hit this gavel, I forgot I promised someone that I was going to announce this. The cheer team, um, that cheers for the Champion Force called the East Point Magic at, uh, St. Peters, I mean, I'm sorry, St. Thomas Lutheran Church hosts. The girls are going to the Nationals in July and the team is hosting a fundraiser to help them cover some costs. So if you want to help this team, which again is the East Point Magic, and they are the cheer team, um, of Champion Force, please go to St. Thomas Lutheran Church if you want to donate to help, um, this team of young people, um, go to the Nationals. Uh, and also meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.